This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting, our December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Commissioner meeting. All times on this agenda are approximate. Considerations of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration. And the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the Commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend to make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioner Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the Commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation, which is pursuant to NRS two-four-one oh-one-five-three-B-two. So I'll call this meeting to order. Bert, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioner may break for lunch from twelve PM to one fifteen PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. So we'll go to Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Yar, we'll start with you.
Oh, yeah, we had the public lands meeting. I had asked Bert if he'd show up, and he showed up. Straightened out a lot of stuff that we had misconceptions over. So I was kind of proud of Bert on that one.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
All right, I have no report. Kathy?
I attended via Zoom the NNRDA meeting yesterday. Sheldon, they did a nice breakdown of all of the things that are going on in all the counties for moving forward with different projects. And he did mention the energy project here. But Carlin, Wells Wendover, you know, all of them are, you know, having projects going on. And so just in appreciation to Sheldon and his staff for all the hard work with that.
Nice, thank you. Okay, we'll move into Staff Reports on Meetings, Conferences, and Seminars Attended.
Good morning, Commission. So first, I would like to start with, we did put out suggestion boxes for our employees. We had one here at the Administration Office, one at the Health Nurse, one over at the Rec Center, and I'm not sure if there were anywhere else.
Road and Bridge.
Road and Bridge. Road and Bridge in the break room. So I will, I will give you guys what, what responses we got out of them. And these are with no edits, so. They would like anniversary bonuses or raises, higher wages, or lower the price of groceries, please. Year-to-date or Christmas bonuses, like five hundred dollars on a higher day or higher cost of living raises, more competitive wages, and a stepping grade increases would help out a lot. County employee annual hire date raises, like some got, higher pay. Pay raises, everything is expensive. End-of-year or Christmas bonus would be amazing. Don't change things just because one or two people wanted it their way. So them are all the comments we got from all these suggestion boxes. We'll be putting them back out and slowly gathering them and coming back and just reading them back to you guys. So the Commission knows what's going on.
I'm glad they're using them.
Yeah.
Yeah. We didn't have any that were, that were vulgar. I'm kind of disappointed, so. And then there's a water right buyback program the, the state is putting on. I put that in our newsletter. There's, there's a lot of data on that, and I don't think that they're going to get a lot of people selling their water rights at the rate that they're offering. So if anybody's interested in that or has questions on that, please let me know. We can forward all that information on, so you get the exact data from the state and what they're offering for this water buyback program. They're trying to balance all these basins that are currently over allocated. They may not be overused, but they're over allocated. So that's part of the reason for them offering this buyback program. Then we got, we got a gentleman here. I'm going to kind of pass this off to Donnie. I've got to thank Ms. Lyra for dragging him in here because I know it was painful. But it's, one of the guys I've always appreciated. He always has something kind of half comical to say, and, and we're truly going to miss him because he does one of the best jobs of anybody that we have out on these rural roads, plating roads and maintaining things. Takes pride in his work, cares about everything that he does, and, and we're going to really miss him. I, I enjoy Earl, so. Earl Sandoval, he's retiring after a lot of years. Sad to see it, sad to see it, Earl.
It's been a tough sixteen years.
Sixteen years, I appreciate what you've done.
Yes, appreciate it.
If, if we can get the Commission up here, maybe we can get a picture with Earl.
I don't know the why it doesn't, doesn't work, you know, but you can't, you know.
Gold bars would have been.
Price of gold's high.
Price, price of gold's low. We tried to look at the Rolex's, but we had some.
I voted in the suggestion box.
Thank you both, yeah, appreciate it.
I love this.
Now that I'm retiring, I can fill the box. No, I appreciate it.
I thought you retired years ago.
I did.
This is kind of semi-retired.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I actually would have lost a serious bet. I didn't think we'd get you here. Well, we went, we tracked down the boss.
Thank you, guys, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Earl.
Like I said, don't call me, I'll call you.
I've heard that for sixteen years.
Yeah, well, thanks, Earl.
Thank you. Oh, you're welcome.
And we have the county Christmas party coming up, so anybody that would like to go, buy tickets from Lakin. It's twenty-five dollars per person or forty dollars for a couple, and. Earl, you're still welcome, although you're retired. Everything else I have is on the agenda, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Bert. So we'll move into public comment. This is for non-agenda items only. Do we have public comment?
I do. For last Friday, I went to the library to listen to the Storytime with Ms. Becca, and there was a boatload of kids, and it was wonderful. It was a wonderful environment. The kids were well behaved, and she has the patience of a saint. And it was good, and it was fun, and I enjoyed it. So I wanted to say, you know, thank you very much for that because it really was a good experience watching those kids, and they were having fun. So I wanted to ensure that I.
All right, is there any more public comment? Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Court's office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Agenda Notice. Two, approval of October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of November ninth, twenty twenty-three Meeting Minutes. And four, approval of payroll change requests.
Did you have any checks that, oh, that's on.
No, yeah, that's.
Never mind, I'll make, did we have?
Yeah, we got one, two, and three.
So I'll make the motion that we approve one, two, and three.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to item one, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove payment of bills.
We need to hold back check number twenty-two-twenty-one-eight-thirty-two and twenty-two-twenty-thirty.
Okay, so is there a motion?
And I'll make a motion to pay the reminder that the major of the bill.
Motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion that we approve check twenty-two-eighteen-thirty-two and twenty-two-twenty-thirty.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything we need to know? Okay, we're good. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all abstained from those that are made to my employer. So we'll move to item two, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three audit report after a slideshow presentation by CPA Jennifer Frank of Hinton Verdict CPAs and Advisors.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
And Lakin, you've got my slide? Okay.
Yes, give me one second.
Well, good morning, everybody.
Just one second, Jennifer.
Good morning, everybody, my name is Jennifer Frank.
Hold on one second for us, we're getting the computer set up here. And good morning to you as well.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. My ears are a bit plugged this morning with a headphone, so I might ask you to repeat yourself.
Okay, are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're all set up, Jennifer, and the floor is yours.
Perfect. Okay, so I will be covering your audit for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. And Lakin, I'm going to start on that preface slide. And it's always, always my pleasure to give thanks to the staff, the county staff, Lakin and the Finance Department, and Ducey in the Treasurer's Office, and the accountants over at Kettington and Christiansen. We know how much work it takes to get ready for an audit and all the effort that they put in, and we greatly appreciate it. And, and wanted to convey our thanks on that. So you guys, for fiscal year twenty-three, there was one new GAASB that we had to implement, which was ninety-six, and that's on subscription-based information technology arrangements. And we did not, it did not impact your financials, but there is a new footnote in there in Note One. I just wanted to point that out. I'm going to go to the next slide, which is your audit report. On page one of your financial statements, you have your independent auditor's report. I'm happy to report that we had an unmodified clean opinion again this year on the financial statement. Fourth, the back of your report, starting on page one thirty-three, is your report on internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance. So there was one finding from last year that was carrying forward, and I'm happy to report that that one was cleared this year. And I want to slide to the next slide, which discusses findings and recommendations. And I'm super excited to let you know that we had no current year material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which is awesome news.
That is great.
And I will also point out, I don't have it listed on the slide, but your single audit this year also did not have any findings related to your federal awards that we tested as major programs. So awesome, awesome work by, by Lakin and the staff, and we were super excited to see that this year. Okay, I'm going to go to the next slide, which is financial highlights. On, I'm going to actually refer you to different pages in your financial statement. You have, in your NDNA, starting on page seven, looking more to myself right now, you have these little condensed comparative financial statements. So page seven has your condensed balance sheet for the year, and I always like to point these out because, sorry, what was that?
Nothing.
Okay, I thought I heard something. So they have these little comparative statements, so you can kind of look at the differences between the last, you know, fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-two. The first two columns are your governmental activities, and then the second two are your business type with the combined total on the end there. And then page eight has your condensed income statement, and again, it's comparative. So you will see for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, the combined total, we had a net decrease in net position of one, just under two million. On page eighteen of your financial statement, you have your governmental funds statement, and you ended up one, one hundred and seventy-six million in fund balance at the end of the year. And then on page twenty-one, you have your proprietary fund, which ended the year at sixty million in net position. And I'm going to go over some of these funds in a moment. So your fund balance is, you're going to be your governmental funds, and those are on the current resource focus. The net position is going to be your enterprise funds, your business-type funds. I'm going to go to the next slide, which is our first graph. So these are our five-year trends that we'll be looking at. So the first one is our general fund balance, fund balance fund. So that, that, I never tell what colors these are, that kind of pinkish color is your unassigned fund balance. It decreased two-point-one million this year, I'm sorry, four-point-two million. Assigned fund balance is that fund balance that's assigned for next year's budgeted expenditures. So that ended the year at a little over twenty-three million. You have your committed fund balance, which is that lower green line, which is the fund balance that's committed for the retiree insurance within half of the restrictive fund balance. And then if you look at it, we like to take the fund balance and compare it to usually what your, your budgeted expenditures are to kind of get half a mini month of reserve you would have. So unassigned, you have about nine months' worth of reserve in your fund balance. Now keep in mind that you have that committed, so that's covering you through twenty-four, so this would be nine months beyond that. I'm going to go to the next slide, which is your CCP fund, your construction of capital project fund balance. So you had a decrease of four-point-seven million. Fiscal year eighteen, you guys have that, that transfer in, that NPM, the net line proceeds, was put in there in fiscal year eighteen, which will be increased back fund balance. And so for fiscal year twenty-three, you had about six-point-two million in capital outlay for paving project, or paving projects, safer as the schools and other projects, so that's where we're seeing that decrease in the current year. I am going to go to the next slide, which is your equipment and building replacement fund. We had a one-point-two million dollar decrease for fiscal year twenty-three. And again, it was various vehicles, equipment purchases during the year that caused that decrease. Pretty stable. Over the last five years, we, we were increasing up through twenty-two, and then this is the first year we've had this decrease. I'm going to go to the next slide, which is going into the Battle Mountain Water and Sewer Funds. So this is going to be your net position trend over the last five years. So for fiscal year twenty-three, there was an increase of two-point-two million in net position. The net investment in capital assets increased, basically increased to two-point-two million due to capital asset additions outpacing depreciation for the year. That restricted net position down towards the bottom was at one-point-eight million, and that's at AB one-ninety-eight reserve. And our unrestricted saw a small decrease of fifty-two thousand for the year, and you have approximately nineteen months of operating reserves in your fund balance. So again, pretty stable, healthy fund balance. And I'm going to the next slide, which is the sewer fund. So we had our change in net position. It was three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand increase over the prior year. We had an increase in our net investment in capital assets of four-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. Again, that's due to asset additions outpacing the depreciation. We have that restricted balance, which is that county option sales tax reserve, and that was down one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, and our unrestricted went up fifty-two thousand, and you have approximately seventy months of operating reserve there, so pretty healthy fund balance there as well. Your very next slide is your cash balance trend. Cash has been pretty stable over the years. We had a decrease in the governmental, was down about five-point-one million. Business type was down about one-point-seven million. And I just had a couple of items I wanted to point out, and I'm just flipping to those in my, my copy of the financial statements. Your capital asset footnote is on page forty-four. So you'll see for the governmental activities, you have a bit over eight million in capital asset addition for the year. And the business type activities, you have just under four million in additions of capital assets. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Looks like no questions.
No questions.
No question.
Okay, then, Lakin always knows how to reach me if, if any of you have follow-up questions or just need a standing board during the year. We're always happy to, to do that for you. And again, I just wanted to convey my thanks to everybody in finance, and Lakin, and Ducey, and, and everything for all the efforts they put in on the audit this year and clearing out those findings.
Well, thank you, Jennifer, for your service as well.
And thank you, guys, for all the hard work, so.
Thank you.
Kind of, for that.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to say how big of a deal this is. It's, I've been doing this now ten years, and I don't think I've ever, that I recall, I've ever had a year that's had zero findings. So it just goes to show the hard work of Bert, his team, and then the department's working with us. I, I know it hasn't probably all been easy. It's probably been a little kicking and screaming along the way about certain things, but at the end of the day, that we can present a, a clean audit report to taxpayers, that's, that's pretty astounding. So it's a job well done and much appreciated.
Yes, agreed.
Okay, so do we have a motion? Was there any other, actually, is there any other comment on it, anything that anybody else would like to say? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'm going to make the motion that we approve the twenty-two-twenty-three audit report.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. We'll move on to item three. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove Joining Fan Flight Alliance Northern Nevada and to send a letter of interest to add a representative to the Board.
So I put this on for you guys' consideration. So this is, Elko is putting this together. They're trying to keep their commercial flights into their airport, and they've had a little bit of trouble since COVID, and some of the, the new FAA retiring some of their airplanes that come in and out, and the sizes, they're moving up. They're trying to do this to keep these flights coming in. Ms. Jan Baum over there, who's the city manager for Elko, is kind of heading this, and, and it's, could have a positive impact on all the surrounding counties. I gave you guys a kind of a cheat sheet on what this is about. I'll give one to you guys as well. And if there's anybody in the, here today that, that would like one of these, I can give that to you as well. But a lot of these big industry and the, and the businesses, they don't, these CEOs, they don't want to drive seven, eight hours to somewhere to see it. So keeping this commercial flight, even if it's one a day, can have a pretty big effect on all these little counties up here in, in Northern Nevada.
Are there any questions? Any public comment? Okay. I'll hear your motion.
So before we do a motion for, look, is there, I was looking for, who are there for the cost for us?
At this time, there's no cost for us.
No cost, oh, okay. All right.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the Joining Fan Flight Alliance Northern Nevada and to send a letter of interest and add a representative to the Board.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Is everybody okay with me being not representative?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, we, we appreciate it, I'm sure Elko will as well.
Okay, we'll move into item four, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the Austin Community Center and Medical Clinic Final Project Proposal in an amount of one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand percentage-based agreement. Morning, Aaron.
Good morning, Commissioners. Marion Martinez for the record. And with me, I have Rosanna Rosendez, my lead project draftsman.
Morning, Rosanna.
And Marion, come up and join us. Marion is my company comptroller.
Morning, Aaron.
She handles all of our finance and contractual items. So bear with us as we get this fire stream opened up. So while I'm doing that, I'll go ahead and just briefly talk about the project. So the Austin Community Center's been kind of a long working component that stems back into last year as the county has been seeking grant funding for this project. And with that grant funding comes a lot of items that happen on the forefront. So we've done quite a bit of cost estimating and conceptual drafting in order to pump lender can and navigate what they want to see in the community. So what I'm going to show you today is not something that is in, in stone. There's still quite a bit of work to be done. The item in front of you today is strictly a contractual item to send AM Engineering into the next phase of the project. So hopefully this comes up. Sometimes fights with me. And again, while that's loading up, I'm going to go ahead and, and talk about a few of the specifics. So we have two grants that are allocated to this project. One is a Ursa grant, which Marion means home.
Health.
Put you on the spot here.
Yeah, it's, they give that for anything related to health.
Yeah, it's, they give that for anything related to health clinics or projects like that. It's, I'm drawing a complete blank right now. Health, service.
Not a problem. So basically, there's two, which the other one is HUD. Again, this is kind of a conglomeration between the grant administrator and the Porter Group that's orchestrated these grants. One of them's for eight-hundred thousand, the second grant's for six-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. The HERSA grant, right now, Lakin filed in an extension, which allowed Lander County a little more breathing room to get some of these final specifics navigated. And the second one is the HUD grant, which has not currently been officially awarded, as we understand it. There's some steps that need to be taken for Lander County to actually get those funds awarded. One of them is an environmental assessment. That's where we've been working with staff from more of a county engineer perspective, and we're trying to navigate an environmental checklist that satisfies their needs, but doesn't launch us into a two-hundred-thousand-dollar environmental project. So we're hoping to submit that in the coming weeks to see if they say yes or no. If they accept our checklist, then we'll be able to maybe move forward with the HUD grant. But as of right now, HERSA is the official grant that's been awarded, and HUD, there are steps that need to be taken. One of them is this environmental piece that then allows them to move forward with their awarding and funding process. So before I move past the grants, I'd just like to say that AM Engineering is not your grant administrator. Lander County is trying to create this program where we have the Porter Group, we have these grant administrators. We're chasing down these grants, but we don't necessarily have the full backbone infrastructure as a county to support the grant itself. And what I mean by that is typically, the grant has a person that runs the grant through completion, and that is a more of a grant administrator-type person that gets paid a pretty high fee. Typically, ten percent of the total project cost is allocated to these grant administrators. So they, they're a pretty high-dollar item. They're hard to find people that can actually navigate these grants. What AM Engineering is doing is really just putting our best foot forward. Marion worked for the school district for many years, so she is helping us navigate this grant. We're just trying to help Lander County do all the steps that are needed to push the grants through. So again, we are not in a grant administrator, and we recommend Lander County obtains one. We've been working with the county management, and we're trying to locate some local resources. Mr. Nelson's wife has teed us up with a local base, kind of like the Pennington Foundation, but more dedicated to Lander County. And they do grant administration, and a lot of those funds go back into the Lander County resources. So there's still some conversation that needs to be had as to that grant administrator. Marion's went through, and you can see this checklist here. This is just the HERSA checklist. Marion has identified all of the items necessary that we see in the short term to complete this project. And so we try to pick these grants apart to help Lander County not get tripped up in the short term. So again, that's on the HERSA grant. And then here is the checklist that Marion divulgates into for our HUD grant. So we try to hit every major item to understand what the check marks are in the grants. I personally have a lot of experience in grants, so I understand that it's really just a checklist thing and making sure you hit every item. They're extremely in-depth. I'm not going to try to cloud that at all. These grants are very hard to navigate, and people typically have a grant administrator that chases that down. So we hope to locate some more local resources and help build the program of grants that Lander County is trying to achieve. Do you anyone have any questions on grants?
Okay.
Okay. Rosanna, do you mind navigating the 3D model? Pull up the Austin Community Center. Okay, so we worked with Nevada Health Centers and identified some of the needs that they have for the clinic. So the wing on the right-hand side of this 3D model that you're looking at is the separate dedicated wing for the Nevada Health Center, and the left-hand side of the wing is dedicated to the Austin Community Center. Again, it's a dual-use structure that's going to help Lander County kind of staff the facility and at the same time, making sure that it's always occupied. The site location is in the same location as it was previous. The county had us look into a few different options. One of them was potentially ripping down the old public works yard and rebuilding the structure there. We looked at some parcels downtown, and it was ultimately decided that due to some cost purposes, that it was most conducive to place the site up by the pool where it originally was tasked to be. Again, these are all not fully solidified in terms of architectural elements or layouts, but inside the facility, it's kind of, go back to the floor plan, please. Inside the facility, we have a large great room on the Austin Community Center side with games and pool tables and boards broken down into a larger area. We have a technology room on the bottom end of your screen that you're seeing here. And also, a commercial kitchen is currently outlined in the facility. And some of the thoughts behind that is to give the community a place to allow events to be held, kind of like we do here at the Civic Center. So again, these are all just options. There's nothing that's guaranteed that that has to be there. But again, we're just throwing these out there for the community to digest and comment on and give us any comments that the county would like to see. We have a bathroom facility kind of in a separate portion of the great room with a separator wall to kind of keep some privacy there. And one office coming into the facility with this kind of a glass to its right to allow anyone that maybe, maybe there's an event going on, we can kind of track people coming in and out of the facility from that office and kind of watching who's coming and going from the front door. Again, the clinic is on the left-hand side of your screen here. It's been reduced down to meet their kind of bare minimum needs that they had asked for. We toured their Elko facility in October, and we broke down kind of what they're looking for and expecting in the, in the community center wing. They have some examination rooms and some specialty items as it relates to the restroom facilities, as they're doing kind of like a testing and urine analysis. So there's some unique design elements to that portion of the facility, so it will be absolutely tailored for professional office space and clinical type of procedures, but nothing surgical or that would require specialty equipment. So that is the Austin Community Center. The, again, I recommend that we maybe have a community meeting going forward once this contract has been solidified, and we can actually maybe sit down a few times with the residents in Austin and break down all the nuts and bolts of what they're asking for. We have a few ideas about parking with the location that this property is being orchestrated in. We have to move the road a little bit, I believe that's Nevada Street. And we're looking at maybe doing something across the street, but we don't want to ruin their sledding hill that they have. And so we're trying to orchestrate some good ideas there that come from Mr. Ramos. So we definitely have a lot of work to do with the community, so don't get that wrong. This is just kind of step one, contractually. I know you have a lot on your agenda, so I'm going to stop there unless you have more questions.
Okay. Any questions, guys? Is there any public comment or questions? All right, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the Austin Community Center and Medical Center Final Project Proposal in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars percentage-based agreement.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. All on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Aaron. We'll move into item five. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the Battle Mountain Fire Hall Final Project Proposal in an amount of one-hundred-and-twenty thousand percentage-based agreement, as well as deciding whether to raise the power poles in an estimate of one-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-six dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, Commissioners. Again, Aaron Martinez for the record. So this item has also stemmed from quite a large planning phase. We went through several renditions for the county to try to help navigate what it is that the county would like to do. You'll see this, the first model was that first rendition where we talked about all sorts of different aspects like burning towers and shooting facilities. And we were just trying to identify and start conversation as to what would be, you know, appetizing for the, for the community. And so we've thrown out several renditions to just really highlight architectural value, what looks good, what does not. And so what you're seeing here is one of those first renditions where we have a museum in there and all these different things requested by staff. So again, we get it requested, we put it on paper for you to chew on. And so that's where these renditions come from. Some of the comments, like Commissioner Chop, was more allocated to maybe just a storage facility with no office space or none of that, just a bare-bones facility. So we created a, you know, other renditions where it was just storage base for the fire. This project is now elevated back to more of a conglomeration between EMS, fire, and the sheriff's office. And so due to that conglomeration, we have created this latest rendition. It's for the property that the county has closed on across the street. That latest meeting that we had identified that they would like a couple of different options. So we've looked at larger bays that would allow the trucks to be double-stacked, which pushes us from anywhere from eighty to a hundred-foot bay lengths. And they've asked for six bays currently. So that would house most, if not all, the vehicles that they're currently in use. Some feel that the six bays is not enough. So that's definitely something that Lander County needs to consider. About the site a little bit, we were originally, if you wouldn't mind pulling a quick telemetry. So some decisions have been made, which is push the project from this original location over here by the sheriff's office. Bear with me as I zoom in here. Of course, the internet doesn't like me now. So we had this original site location by the sheriff's office. That site location was a lot easier to develop. Why? Because we have a roadway that ties into 305. We have utilities that are harnessed in this site. By going across the street, unfortunately, it does increase the site project requirements. Because we are abutting 305, most likely, Endo is going to require some form of occupancy permit and turn lanes to come off of 305 and an acceleration lane off of 305. We're going to have to extend mainline utility infrastructure over there. And we're also going to have to masquerade the site. There's a big hole. And so there's quite a bit of civil infrastructure investment that needs to go in to get that site ready to even put a building on. So that's something that the county needs to understand is your current budgetary outlay outlines a facility that was more geared for this site over here. Because of the additional upgrades on this site, I believe that your budgetary outlay is going to be shy of, of what's needed based on what's being asked by staff today. We have a two-story facility, if you go back to the 3D model, Rosanna. Right now, we have six bays outlined, a hundred feet long with a maintenance bay. We have a kind of a mud, mud bay that's in the back that will have a large grate system to allow the trucks to be washed off outside the facility. On the sixth bay that you're seeing here, or the seventh, excuse me, in this model, we have a maintenance bay that would allow working on the vehicles inside the facility. And then attached to that, we have a two-story structure that's going to house EMS and fire. Right now, there's six bunk rooms in that facility, three for EMS and three for fire. They both have shower facilities on both floors and a locker room facility in the main floor, a commercial kitchen, and a small eating area, turnout gear rooms, conference room, which will also be kind of a training room. And then for the sheriff's office, they've requested a simulator room for their training purposes.
Why, why are we, why do we have three dedicated bunk rooms for fire?
So I believe that may be for the sheriff's office, for their training facility that they're trying to bring to town.
That makes sense.
And I would like to just follow up with, so Aaron's not hanging out here alone. There was a joint meeting between the sheriff's office, myself, Mr. Martinez, EMS, and this is what we're trying to do. We'll probably be back for more money because the initial budget was simply for a fire hall. We've since added the EMS and the sheriff's requests onto this, which would have been additional building that would be over here by the sheriff's office for, for them, trying to leverage our dollars per square foot and the, you know, building one wall and as opposed to two going up. So the thought is it's, it's going to save money and leverage some of it, putting it all into, into one space. So we, we assured Aaron, I don't know where Mr. Unger is, but that we would be here for him today so he wasn't out here trying to look like he was building more than we're asking for. This, the ten million that our original ask was simply for a fire hall. Mr. Martinez can kind of touch on where he thinks will fall in the budget with all of this included and with the requests of, of Mr. Unger, you know, with the fire department extending the bays and adding a few additional bays as well. So maybe you can touch on what, what you believe the total price will be and, and kind of where we can.
Absolutely, absolutely. So yeah, thank you for saying that. Because yes, we're, we'll, we'll, we'll build it out of toothpicks, and it'll be three feet tall if you want. We will design whatever Lander County wants, and we're happy to, to, to do that. So I appreciate Bert saying that. In terms of the total cost right now, it's ranging in upwards of fourteen million dollars with the current outlay that we have. We have a screen wall component that's into it to kind of protect those residents on the backsides. We're going to have a lot of whistles and bells blowing off. A lot of people work night shifts, so we're trying to be considerate of that in the design and looking at a screen wall, CMU wall on the backside, ten to twelve feet tall to protect those residents as best as we can from sound. There's a training component on the facility, if, if the county would like to see, where they were looking at some rappelling aspects on the side of the facility. But long story short, the, the site infrastructure, we're looking at probably at least a million dollars just in paving and the turn lanes for the end-out occupancy permit. And so that right there really elevates the project beyond what this site was. Again, we had the current roadway already here.
Remind me, why did we decide to look for a different area than what we had over here? I don't recall.
So there were two reasons. One was just constriction of the site. We only have a limited amount of site, and we would have to share a fire lane with the potential build that's coming in with a truck stop.
Oh, that's what it was, yeah. That's right, truck stop.
And, and then we couldn't add the additional facilities into one.
And we're just so tight geometrically, this site and where, the way everything was. Like, we have a few hundred feet on this south end of the facility. If everything would have been shifted over a little more. But unfortunately, the sheriff's station was here first, then the county building. So unfortunately, the planning of this lot has kind of constricted that far end to really any development.
And refresh my memory, didn't, I thought when we had a budget amount of ten million dollars, we had discussed the fire hall and sheriff's department at that time. Now, since then, I know we've brought on EMS, and, you know, we're paying rent over there. We might as well build our own facility. But didn't we, at the ten million dollars, weren't we looking at fire and sheriff?
Correct. And, and the, really, the biggest change is the bay expansion. We had single trucks in that space.
So that's my question. So, so we went from ten million to fourteen million. That's my question, is how much is that double lane, what's that, what, what is that costing us?
I believe the total site infrastructure is two-and-a-half million difference than what the site infrastructure was here, which is the difference between the two facilities.
He will have room for expansion over there if, if we put it across the road.
That's correct. You can see kind of in your model on the screen in front of you, kind of that gray or lighter gray is kind of the undeveloped area. Right now, we have kind of on the left-hand side of your screen is light vehicle traffic that would come into the facility for typical parking standards. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see that it's strictly heavy truck-related to allow full pull-in and pull-out. So on the backside of the facility, they can pull out of the garage bays, and so that nothing's stuck in there. Like, if a truck is not going to start, you can back the other one right out the other end. And again, there's probably a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-foot buffer on the backside from those residents for future development or storage. So yes, sir, to answer your question. So it's a great site for the investment, and I do like the three-hundred-and-sixty-degree effect where we are investing near private residents, and so that should spur this area for future development. You know, a ten-to-fourteen-million-dollar investment should, someone should be happy to maybe, maybe build next door to you. You know, a ten to fourteen million dollar investment should, someone should be happy to maybe, maybe build next door to you. Is there any other questions about the design elements?
Do we have any public questions or comments?
I got one question. Wouldn't it be cheaper to put power line underground instead of raising the pole?
So I don't think that we need to raise the power. We went over there and we did do a measurement on that and I think it was twenty-two feet from, from the ground right now. Currently, I think most of our underpasses and stuff that people are driving through are about fourteen. So we, we have plenty of room there, so I don't, I don't know that that needs to be addressed. You guys could probably scratch that from.
I was curious because you had it in the plans here.
Right. Yeah, we were kind of bouncing back and forth. So in our plans, it, it was dropping it underground. But once the cost came back and the height requirement, we figured to save the money. And that's where this project has still quite a bit of work. Nothing is solidified. Again, this is a contractual item today to then us to come forward with more solidified information.
No questions? I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Battle Mountain Fire Hall Final Project Proposal in the amount of, what is it, twelve million?
Hundred and twenty thousand.
Hundred and twenty thousand dollars percentage-based agreement as well as deciding whether to raise the power poles in an estimate of a hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and fifty cents.
Which we don't need, so we can strike that.
Scrap that last one.
So I will second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're moving forward on it.
Thank you.
Yep. So item six, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove a contract for services as EMS medical director between Lander County and Dr. Paul Herman, MD in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand per year, with the exception of travel expenses. Contract terms are October first, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Do we have Mr. Herman here? No, they're.
Oh, we're good?
Yeah, they're on hold right now.
Mike Harris for the record.
Hi, I'm Paul Herman.
Morning, guys. Okay, anybody have any questions about the contracts, Bert? You guys have anything that you'd like to say or?
Really, I just wanted to make sure I introduced myself to you guys so you knew who I was. I know you don't have to know everybody that's working for the county. But as we interact, I thought it might be good for you guys to see me and if you do have any questions, get an idea of what I look like and I'm gonna be taking care of the inmates over there and take care of EMS guys as well. Nice.
Okay, I'll make a quick comment because we haven't discussed it, but I think everybody's aware the reason this hasn't been done up to now is that Dr. Herman wants only ten days on the termination. Normally, we have somewhere in the vicinity of thirty, sixty or ninety, depending on the circumstances. The problem is going to be, the practical problem is going to be trying to find somebody else to do it if he gives us only ten days notice. For some reason, he wants it ten days, so maybe he can enlighten us why that is such a sticking point.
Yeah, that was my question is why wouldn't thirty days not be feasible if you're asking for a shorter period of time?
Well, I think thirty, sixty or ninety is actually fine. The actual reason why I got in there was a bit of a compromise. And when I was talking with the county about taking the position, as you know, or you might know, that I also work for the hospital. And as such, sometimes I seek the counsel of different individuals throughout the community, having worked here for a few years. And so one of my mentors told me I should have a one hour out from the contract, which he thought was. And so as we were negotiating that, I mentioned that to Bert and he said, okay, well, I'll give you ten days. And I said, great, well, that sounds like a good compromise. And not so much that I would ever give anybody ten days. I don't think I've ever quit anything in ten days. But I thought it was just more of a gesture of that the county was willing to work with me and that if there was any concerns that, you know, that they, they would trust me and that I would trust them. So it seemed to be kind of a small thing and so I just left it in there as kind of a token of that. We did strike some other elements from the original contract as well that we just thought were counterproductive to working with the county. As far as the county works with the state and the individuals in the county, I don't know if you're familiar with some of those things we took out of there. But we just want to, you know, set up an opportunity for us to work and take the best care of the community that we can and not knowing what's over the horizon for the health of the state or the nation or the world. So those are just a few of the things we put in there or took out in order to keep that as clear and understandable as possible. But that's why the ten days is in there and so just for your information.
So I would think historically, we're pretty set on thirty days, just for the reason what Bill has stated, you know. So if you decide to, you have to give us adequate time to find somebody. And I do understand the, the trust card, but we are, it is a signed contract, which, you know, has, right, has some teeth. But I don't know, how do you guys feel about?
I have the issue, and I could be wrong on this, as far as the licensing for EMS. If he's gone and we don't have a doctor, what happens with our licensing for EMS? And if there's a problem, there's a problem. And so I don't want to get us, go down that rabbit hole of ten days when, if we have more time and to get someone in there, if we're gonna have problems with renewing licensing or if it falls during licensing and yeah, and he's not there, we, then we tie our own throats and I don't want to do that. For no reason other than, you know, saying that we trust each other because that's just gonna put this, that screws to EMS and I just, I don't agree with that.
How long does it take to get re-credentialed? Probably even more than thirty days.
Yes, I was, I was gonna say, I think that maybe we should consider something, the, the ten day out isn't, isn't significant in, in the fact that we won't have a doctor because he's been pretty honorable in stepping up for us to this point. The, the important thing would be something in the contract that maybe he would hold the licenses under, under him until the term, until we have someone else in, you know, to fill that void with some sort of exception. I'm sure that there could be something wrote in there that would, that would protect us because our concern is licensure.
No, I think that's completely acceptable and reasonable. And I would expect that to happen at any, in any case, even if I did take a one hour out. But that those, those links would stay in place until someone else can take them.
Okay, if I may point out, it already says in termination that the county and the provider can agree in writing to terminate this agreement at any time, anytime. So if we've got everything lined up, we can just do it. That's why, I don't know, my suggestion would be have the thirty days. That's to protect us for the licensure part and that's it. I mean, if, if everybody is trusting everybody, you've got the earlier out, just by agreeing.
Agreement. Yeah, but I'm not sure that that protects the licensure because the, if I, if I'm understanding it correctly, it takes sometimes
It took some time, I would, I would say.
Months to, to.
I would bank on three months.
Well, we can, we can add a provision for that if that's what you want. But I didn't, I was not aware there was, that that was a sticking point. In previous, you didn't show up, but in the previous discussions, my recollection is that we went on and on about the licensure. Am I remembering it wrong or?
No, and, and to, to Dr. Herman's credit, that was not his mistake for not showing up at the previous meetings.
That was my fault.
That fell on, on county staff, not on our doctor. So he had conflicting schedules and we did not notify him of that. So if anybody's gonna fall on that, sort of, it would be the county. Okay. All right, any other questions?
No, other than having that corrected.
Okay, so do we want to, if there's a motion to possibly approve with that exception? Okay, well, there's no other questions or public comment or questions? I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the services as EMS medical director between Lander County and Dr. Paul Herman, MD in amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars per year, with the exception of travel expenses. Contract terms are October first, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. And also add that the aforementioned agreement was applied to that.
And the licensing.
The licensing.
So the motion is your second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Director Chop, glad to have you aboard.
Glad to be aboard, thank you.
Okay, we'll take a ten minute break. We'll go ahead and open the meeting back up.
Unmuted. This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so we'll move into item seven. For possible action to appoint a Lander County Commissioner to the following various twenty twenty-three advisory boards. A, category one, one Lander County Regional Transportation Commission. I'll read this in and then we will go back and discuss it. B, category three, one Austin Airport Advisory Board. C, category four, one Lander County Hospital District Alternate. Two, Central Nevada Regional Water Authority. Three, Department of Energy Board of Representatives. Four, Nevada Association of Counties. Where we don't currently have anybody sitting in our former commissioner's seat and the governor's supposed to appoint, when should we hold off on appointment of these boards until we potentially have this person or?
Sure, that's why I put this on the agenda. We've not heard anything back from the governor's office and it's not on their webpage, the advertisement, to fill that seat. They may be thinking that elections are close enough to not fill the seat and just wait for the elections to take care of itself. And so I put this on here for your guys' decision to do whatever you'd like with it. If you guys would like to fill some of these seats and feel that they're important, we can. If you guys would like to just table it until later, we can do that as well. But I wanted to make sure that this was in front of you guys to make that decision.
I would like to see something in writing for them waiting to fill it before we did that.
Yeah, so there's a potential we could wait the whole year. I mean, we could just operate as a board of four, huh?
Yes, I've sent, I've sent a couple of emails without any response and, and I believe that our assistant district attorney has also reached out without a response that I'm aware of, so.
Okay. Well, I mean, I could, you could put me on one, Lander County Regional Transportation Commission, I could take that. And then I could also do the Department of Energy Board, I could sit on those two until we, if we do get somebody in, then maybe we can look it out. Is there anybody else that wants to sit on any?
I'll take the Lander County Hospital Alternate.
And then do we wanna wait for Mike for the other ones?
Yeah, maybe.
You know, for the ones that aren't filled, we bring it back, the empty, the ones, those ones back when Mike is here.
You bet, if you, you guys.
So we'll make the changes that we've noted here and then, and then wait till Mike gets back and see if he'd like to sit on any of the rest of the boards.
You bet. If you guys put that in the form of a motion, I think we're.
Okay, hear a motion.
How do we word this?
I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'll make a motion that we put myself on Lander County Regional Transportation Commission. JR will serve as the Lander County Hospital District Alternate and also serve on the Department of Energy Board of Representatives. And we'll leave the other boards open until our other commissioner, Mike Chop, can be here to see if he'd like to sit on any of those boards.
Commissioner Sparks, I'm not certain that you can make the motion for yourself. I think you can make it for JR and then somebody else can make it.
Thank you for that clarification. So I'll make a motion that we appoint JR to the Lander County Hospital District Alternate.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a se, is he fine to second that or should he?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion that Brian is Lander County Regional Transportation Commission.
I'll second.
And, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Should I abstain from it since it's? I'm fine, okay, good. I'll, I'll say yea as well. And then one more motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Brian on the Department of Energy Board of Representatives.
Can I have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Sound good, guys? Bill?
Yeah.
We'll move on. For discussion and possible action to get direction to move forward with a site license agreement with Lander County and Sky Fiber Internet to build a new repeater site to serve the community with high-speed internet on county property above the BM mountain. The board to approve the specific property description.
So we did have Sky Fiber here earlier and they, they left because I told them that we'd, I would ask you guys to table this. They sent us a new location this morning that we didn't verify is Lander County property, so we want to verify that once again and then bring this back to you guys at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and table number eight. Move into item nine. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove creating an ordinance in regards to garbage trucks spilling trash. Might I suggest since it was Commissioner Chop that wanted this item on the agenda that we table it until he's here and can speak to it? Would you guys be fine with that?
I am.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and table number nine. And we'll move into item ten. For discussion and possible action to review options for existing beacon tower at the Battle Mountain Airport and recommendations or preferences from the board on most desired path forward. Options include leaving the tower in place, relocating the tower to another location or demolition of the tower.
Good morning, Commissioner David Meyer, JUB Engineers for the record.
Morning, David.
As part of next year's project, which we'll get into a little more later, we'll be installing a tip-down pole to house a new beacon. So when the beacon needs to be maintained, the pole can just be cranked down and you can access the pole that way. The beacon, as it stood since the airport was built, is on basically in a framed steel lattice structure with a ladder access. And the last person brave enough to climb that ladder was Carla Harless. So it's been a little while since anyone's decided to go up that thing without climbing gear. Tower's about sixty feet tall, so definitely a safety issue that when they do need maintenance on it, they bring out a bucket truck or get climbing gear. It's just becoming a hazard. So initially, our plan was to just tear the thing down. Not gonna be a beacon on it anymore, why would we leave it in place? But I had a little bit of a change of heart after talking to a few local users. Just given the age and kind of the iconic look of that tower. I apologize, I don't have it on my posters, but I did include it in the backup so you can see what tower we're talking about.
So we're not required to have that?
No, it's, it's only for the beacon right now. When the beacon's put on a new tip-down pole, that tower can be taken down. So there's a couple of options. I've talked with Bert about this a number of times and we thought we'd put it out to the board and let any of the public comment on it too. Some of the options, we can leave it in place and still put a tip-down pole, just, you know, a hundred feet off of it or so. There's room out there to put the pole and that way the tower can remain in place, given its connection to the airport. One idea that was floated was relocating it to the museum. I do have a call in to Lori Price. I haven't been able to catch her though. I tried to catch her tomorrow, but I got back into town after four. So I did walk that area. It's actually for the size of the tower, it's only got about a ten-foot by ten-foot base. So it's not a particularly cumbersome thing. There's room out there, but I just don't know if the, the museum would even have any interest in it.
I mean, the mu, I mean, how old is this thing? How long is it?
Um, so the tower itself, that tower out there, we believe was built in the early sixties. But it replaced an older tower that traces back to like pre-World War Two. It's the type of tower that they used during mail flights. I guess that was right after World War Two for hauling mails. So I won't bore you with all the details, but they would fly based upon radio signals. If you were on the right, right side of the tower, it gave you a certain signal. If you were on the left, it gave you a, a different one. So there's some history to it. One other component I glossed over, I apologize. We did do as part of the design project, it's currently underway. We did a cultural resources update for the airport specifically for that tower. Our cultural resources sub consultant did not find that that tower is eligible, in their opinion, under the National Historic, N, N sharp, I think is what it is, eligibility criteria. That is still being reviewed by the Nevada State Historic Preservation Office. So all of this is contingent upon their findings too. If they come back and they say this is a historic structure, then that might change what we want to do, but at this. But at this time, we, we don't think that's going to be their ruling.
Well, the thing is, if we don't, if we don't need it and it doesn't have to be there for any sort of regulations, I'd say take it down. And if the museum wants it, I guess let them have it.
I don't think it'd be a good idea to put it in a museum because you'd have to build a heck of a fence around it to keep the kids from climbing it.
Right, and that's part of what we wanted to talk about is it becomes a safety issue.
If I had one at home when I was young, I'd have been able to pop that thing.
And you're right, it's an upkeep issue. And I talked with, with a number of users out there and they all basically said the same thing, you know? It's a kind of an iconic look, but nobody's going to lose sleep if it comes down. My initial plan was to rip it down. I mean, I, I'm a little brutal in my, in my love of history. You know, it's not going to serve a function and it just becomes another thing that could become a safety issue that would need, you know, continued maintenance from time to time. If you're going to leave it, you might as well paint it and get it looking good. I just, I wanted to bring it up and collect opinions before we just ripped the thing down and.
Yeah.
I have a question. So now the arrows that they have outside by Puppanickel Valley that point this way, are those arrows for flying? Do they have anything to do with this tower?
No, so the tower at this point only stands so that the beacon can sit up high enough that from the air you can see it spinning. So if you're, if you're out around the airport and you see the green and white light that spins around, that's the airfield beacon. That's so pilots who are flying who might not want to use, you know, GPS can, can locate the airport from a distance.
Well, that light that we see, that's not this tower or that is this?
That is this tower, but this tower will be replaced with a tip down pole. So the light will still be out there, it'll just be, the light will be in a different spot. The tip down pole is important for accessibility and maintenance. It just, that, that light is pretty important for the pilots who don't want to fly with an iPad. So being able to accept, you know, get accessibility to that main, or to that beacon for maintenance is, is what we're going for here.
Well, I'd like to see if Lori wants it, even though, and if they want it and they have to figure out how to keep kids off of it. But I hate Terry stuff down there.
Well, it's going to be their problem.
Yeah, so I'd like to at least go that way first.
And a couple of other things to consider. If we tear it down as part of the FAA project, that's an eligible removal item. And we'll just put the beacon back in the same place. You know, we'll put the tower in place or the tip down pole in place of the new tower. If we leave it, then, you know, any cost for upkeep and stuff would not be FAA eligible. And relocation costs would not be FAA eligible. So those would all be costs that would have to be figured out outside of the project in terms of moving it, building a new base.
So what would be the problem with just leaving it there?
There's really not other than it's just a continued, it's just infrastructure that would fall on the county to.
I mean, if, if it's this historical thing and there's, and there's, there's history tied to it, just leave it there. I mean, we don't have to go up and change the light when it.
No, there won't even be a light on the top of it, it'll just be the tower at that point.
Well, the, the one thing that I'm being concerned with is your new beacon needs to be really close to it so that somebody in the dark or, or in fog or something, somebody doesn't fly in the wrong place and.
Yeah, absolutely. The new, the new tip down pole except it'd be fifty, a hundred feet away. And that beacon is supposed to give the location for the entire airport. So you're not flying to that beacon like it's a runway. You're just using that beacon to identify the airport. So, and there's a lot of space between that beacon, that current tower and the vault building that gives it power. Then we could relocate it. We've included the potential for a relocation site as part of our FAA environmental documentation. So we're kind of running on, uh, parallel paths here to allow us the maximum time to do what we want with that tower. So from the FAA's perspective and our progress, project progress, we've left both options open in part because we still need to see what Nevada SHPO says and if they concur with the findings of our cultural report.
Okay. What do you guys want to do? Doesn't really matter.
Does the county administration have any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I've wanted to see if removed one way or the other, whether we gave it to the museum for historic purposes or to clean up the airport and, you know, kind of have a clean project. The more of these things that we leave kind of setting around, they just become dilapidated and just slowly looks worse, right? If, if we have a nice clean project when we, when we leave, it sure does look nice.
We can put it somewhere and kids can pay to climb it.
Yes, I.
They just tie it off.
Yeah. I was just thinking that it might be a benefit.
And if we find a use for it later, like make a big Christmas tree out of it or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely. We could just, we could remove it, take it off site, find a place. It just, again, becomes a, I, I don't want to leave the county with a headache because we didn't do our due diligence. It's like the old plane that used to be out there. There was that big plane that was out there for a long time and it was really cool and it looked really nice. But then it just started falling apart. And the longer you leave stuff in, the more of a headache it is to take out later. So what, I have no issues with leaving it in place, but again, that's not going to fall to me to manage it. I would, you know, there are some things we could do, like cut the ladder so that it doesn't reach the ground just to discourage people from climbing it if it's no longer in use. But those ultimately would be decisions I'd leave for a Bert and Donnie.
I think it'd look neat on the BM Mountain and turn it into a Christmas tree.
I'll have to make sure that it doesn't violate any FAA airspace. They'll be really mad at me if I build an obstruction.
So I think if Lori doesn't want it, I'm not, I'm not against taking it down if it doesn't fall under the SHPO. Once we find that out, if Lori doesn't want it, then I'm not, I'm all right with taking it down. But I'd like to see what she says and SHPO says first and then move forward. Is that all right?
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion too.
Do we have a motion?
I'll say it.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Perfect.
That's what we'll do. All right, so we'll move on to item eleven. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the fiscal year twenty four B I L funded grant application for the construct hangar facility design. Only project at the Battle Mountain Airport for an estimated FAA funding amount of a hundred and ten thousand and Atlanta County match of seven thousand three hundred and thirty four dollars and authorize the county manager to sign.
Perfect, all right. Dave Meyer, J U B again for the record. So you've seen this look before, we talked about this in budget time. This is the apron area for Battle Mountain. We have an existing sixty by sixty hangar down here. So we're, we're keying in on this site number one for a county hangar to hold larger aircraft. All the other hangars out here other than that sixty by sixty, which is privately owned, are built to hold B one aircraft, which are your small aircraft, your pipers, your Cessnas, things like that. By building a facility that could handle the larger B two aircraft, which would be something like a King Air, that would really open up opportunity for the county to try to entice users to base those, those bigger aircraft. There's a number of different things, users that have shown interest or expressed interest in being able to utilize hangar space. The B L M uses seats, single engineer takers, air tractor eight oh twos. Those could be used. A lot of medical providers who fly around tend to fly twin engines like a King Air. So that might be more attractive there, business jets. There's just a lot of different uses for these B two aircraft. And the airport's built out for it, I mean, the aircraft's, or the airport's built out for much larger aircraft. But our hangar space is also designed for those larger B twos. So through the FAA's B I L money, and I won't rehash this whole thing because we did talk about it during budget. Through their B I L funding, which is allocated to the specific airport over five years. There's a lot fewer strings to using that money for revenue generating projects like a hangar. So this just is, with the, with the size of the airport you have out there, the number of payments and stuff. This is the best opportunity that I foresee the airport having it utilizing federal funds to help build a larger hangar to make the airport more appealing and to generate revenue for the county.
Well, just in the sake of spending seven thousand dollars because of the grant, I mean, I, I don't have much command on like airports and all this. But we, if we were to do it and we build a hangar, so there's potential to gen, generate revenue for the county.
Right. And the timeframe for this is, well, this is just for the design. We'll have to wait till twenty twenty six to construct it because the B I L funds go from fiscal year twenty two to fiscal year twenty six and you can collect them over four years. So fiscal year twenty two funds will be used for this design and then twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six will go towards construction. And all the matches on this, as of right now, the state of Nevada approved a fund for aviation, which is just intended to pay out the, the county match on FAA grants for fiscal years twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, maybe twenty six. I'm sorry, I should have looked at that before I came. So all of these matches will actually be covered by the state of Nevada. But their reimbursement doesn't come through until after the project's closed out. They want to see the FAA closeout letter.
So this is my only concern and that's, is just what I said, it's just, it's like you have this grant, you spend this money just to, because it's there. Because, yeah, I, I just, I don't want to get in a, in a, in a position where we're constantly saying yes to this and we're overbuilding our airport. So it's just, again, I, I don't have much of a command on what happened out there and whatnot. So, I mean, I'm open for comments.
What's the cost to construct if it's seven thousand to design, what's the cost?
So it's, the, the design's a hundred and, a hundred and twelve thousand, a hundred and fourteen thousand. Cause three thousand of that'll go to an independent fee estimate. Right now, we've been getting some preliminary numbers from some builders, actually the builder who did the county's hangers back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Costs are high, higher than we anticipated. For a hangar the size we're looking at, they're saying probably eight hundred thousand to a million dollars. So that's, that's just kind of where we're looking at now. Those are some shoot from the hip numbers that would give us power. And, you know, doors and everything like that, the doors are a big expense.
So would that be all at the county's expense, that eight hundred thousand would be?
No, so the FAA's.
Yeah, what's our, what's our bite in this? If we, we do the seven thousand for design, would we pay it out? And then what's our bite going to be if we're going into construction?
Is it a ninety five five match?
No, so based on what we would get out of the FAA, they would be looking at about, for sure, four hundred and fifty thousand of FAA funds. We would also approach them about utilizing some funds from, from the Austin Airport. That would be an option, that would get us up to six hundred and sixty. So I did talk with Bert about this. Right now, based on the cost estimates that we have, probably realistically it would be closer to sixty forty or fifty fifty. Based on today's costs, the hopes, those costs would go down and we would size the buildings such that we're getting, you know, so, so the cost is the controlling factor while we still provide a facility that can house these aircraft, so.
So how many hangers is going to be in it?
So at this, it would be for one hangar that can accommodate one of these larger aircraft.
So I think if the, if we ever want like an EMS provider or anybody like that to be housed here locally, we're going to have to provide them some sort of hangar space to do so. Currently, nobody wants to house one of these planes that are a few million dollars outside. You know, they can help it, so.
Do we have any demand for that currently? You know, have we had people that say we'd fly in, but you don't have a hangar, we can't.
For sure.
We have?
Yeah.
And we've heard it from the airport too, heard it from the users, we've heard it from the B L M. So there's definitely need and, and there's no existing capacity out there right now. Even the sixty by sixty that's out there, you'd be tight to fit in a King Air into it. So you'd have to, you'd, you'd want some wing walkers and.
Yeah, the only thought I had too is if, if we pulled off the thing that we're working with right now with that major builder that we're working with, the Hydrid people, it could benefit possibly some stuff that they need to do too, I guess.
And it would be a benefit to the hospital as well. I know a lot of these traveling doctors that want to fly in and pick up a shift for a week here and a week there. They won't fly in and house their, their aircraft outsides. They're looking for, you know, somewhere to store it inside and then they can pick these shifts up and they can move on. So it could be a benefit to a few other, you know, they, it can be leveraged in other places as well. Just something to consider.
Yeah, and if it's, you know, I, I was here when we built the last ones, I know what we went through with that. You know, this is our best shot at utilizing FAA funding to take a chunk out of this thing. If that's not the appetite of the commission, you know, we're, we're in a very easy position to just redirect that funding. But it would end up going towards seal coats, pavements, things like that that are a little easier to compete with other airports for state apportionment and under other funding sources. So there just isn't a lot of other low priority needs at the airport because Bert and Donnie and the commission and everyone's been taking care of that airport really well and really fighting for those other priorities. So things like taxi lanes have already been done, things like rehabilitating that apron and expanding it, strengthening it. All of that stuff's already been done. Right now, we're just kind of in the maintenance mode with an eye towards a master plan.
So if we approve this design concept before you actually build, because we're coming into twenty twenty four, which is a presidential election year, could there be some changes there that could lower the cost of possibly, I mean, we could see some.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not an, I'm not an economist. I certainly don't want to try to guess at what things look like right now. But even across my fifteen years in this industry, I've never seen economic times like this. I've never seen the cost of materials, what they are. I mean, I don't know, that doesn't mean that things are going to change.
See, that, that's my point, it's like, it's like, it's like a carrot, you have it, but yet construction material costs, everything's out the roof. Would we be better off just to say, yeah, we need it, but maybe not at this particular point in time? And we come back and maybe if, if the opportunity presents itself again, then maybe we look at it again, you know?
Yeah, and the timeline for this is such that twenty twenty six is, is an important year. But twenty twenty four is not necessarily an important year. If this isn't something that the county wants to move on, if they want to wait until next year, we have the capacity within our funding timeline to push the design till next year. If that would bring you more comfort, I will say that will shorten the amount of time that we can spend working with the users to get a design and get the needs catalog. But I don't want the county to feel like you're backed into this design schedule. The, the legwork we've done now has been pretty minimal and there's no reason we couldn't pick it back up next year if it just doesn't feel like the right time this year. But that twenty twenty six is a pretty firm date. If we push it off past then, then we start using, losing years of funding. The twenty twenty three funding has to be spent in twenty twenty six. So that doesn't mean you couldn't do it in twenty twenty seven. You would just have one less year of B I L funding to utilize, that B I L funding would need to go somewhere else. So those are all options.
So, and I'm drawing a blank, the energy company that's outside Austin, what is that?
Orham?
Yes. Now, don't they help pay for emergency services and things like that? Is that anywhere, that funding, some of that funding can be utilized?
There are some funds that are in there, yes, that are paid for emergency services.
Yeah, so I mean, that's just a suggestion that some of the funds that.
Yeah, how we fund the seven thousand, we could.
Yeah, you know, just an idea that that funding is there, that I know this for emergency services.
Well, and again, the seven thousand on this is already going to be funded by the state of Nevada, by their Fund for Aviation. So the match is funded. The bigger question is going to be the funding of the construction.
Right.
Part of it. Cause even if we move forward in twenty twenty six, if that funding is still available, that's only going to be the six point two five percent of the federal. I don't anticipate that the Fund for Aviation would go beyond that standard look, match of the FAA funds themselves. So funding needed outside of that to complete the hangar project would have to be locally funded.
Well, I, I kind of like to compromise and maybe kicking it down, tan down the road maybe for, just to kind of see what happens, transpires in twenty twenty four. That's, that would be my, my two cents on it.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll reach out to the FAA and let them know. I, if that's good with Bert and Donnie, then I think that's a, that's a good decision. And like I said, it shouldn't hurt anything. We have, we do have the environmental clearance on the design, but we haven't started environmental clearance of the construction. So we're talking pretty bare bones in terms of what we've put into this at this point because we wanted to make sure to get to this point and have this conversation before we move forward.
Yeah, cool.
And so just on, just on clear, we don't miss out on any of them funding opportunities at this point. We would if we don't do anything next year because then we've missed a year to potentially.
Yeah, so we need to, the, the money will need to be spent next year to ensure that those twenty twenty two funds are not lost, that they're allocated in time. But that, that can be this year, that can be next year.
So there's no loss?
There's, there's no loss of this time, no.
Okay.
So it'll just be, I'll just send an email to Ricky, our FAA. So it'll just be, I'll just send an email to Ricky, our FAA engineer, and Ken, our planner, and just say, you know, um the the county would prefer to pursue this design project in twenty-twenty-five, uh you know, to provide more opportunity for funding and, you know, reading the market.
So we just we I guess we just don't have to take any action on it, right?
Okay, no.
Well, good. Thank you, uh David.
I will apologize to the clerk's office for having to print that seventy-page document for no reason. And Bert, for-
Okay, we'll move into item twelve for discussion of possible actions to approve, disapprove the fiscal year twenty-four FFA HIP grant application for rehabilitate apron and taxiway B bidding and construction project at the Austin Airport for an estimated FAA funding amount of three hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and a Lander County match of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, and authorized county manager's assignment.
I I would ask you to open thirteen as well, because they're two grants for the same project.
And we'll open up thirteen for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the fiscal year twen- uh fiscal year twenty-four FAA bill funding grant application for real the rehabilitate apron and taxiway B bidding and construction project at the Austin Airport for an estimated FAA funding amount of thirty-three thousand and a Lander County match of twenty-two thousand, or sorry, three hundred and thirty-three thousand and a Lander County match of twenty-two thousand, two hundred, and authorized county manager's assignment.
All right, David Meyer, J U B again. I brought a nice little color-coded Christmas uh photo for everyone. So this project, we've talked about a number of times. This was designed in twenty-twenty-two, um with the intention of trying to build it this year. Um FAA funding for it had to be delayed. Uh we sought two different uh FAA supplemental grants. We didn't have luck on either one. In fact, when we came to find out, there was no actual money tied to it. So that was fun. Um we do have funding now to move forward with this project for the rehabilitation portion. So green is your adjoining taxiway B, red is your existing apron. All the area outside was expanded in twenty-fourteen, so it's in a much better condition. It's also just not eligible from a pavement condition standpoint to be rehabilitated. So um the reason you have two grants is this project will be funded by both traditional AIP funds and also by the first three years of the airport's BIL money. So B twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um that is the compromise that we came up with with the FAA to make sure that this project gets done, because we're starting it's starting to get a little long in the tooth from a design standpoint. So again, um the matches for both of these would be eligible for the uh Fund for Aviation, um which would cover the county match in its entirety. So that fund is set up to have a million dollars a year, and based on that million dollars a year, there there should be substantial funding to cover all the local matches for the general aviation airports in the state of Nevada, plus Elco. They added Elco in there, um because Elco's right on the line, as we heard about earlier. Um so we still want to show that county match. Um it'll still need to be budgeted. It'll be reimbursed at the end of the project. So um these numbers are consistent with what we've shown the last few times. They're actually already budgeted, um because we wanted to make sure we were budgeted, uh in case we did get some of those supplemental grants. And we're working really closely. We actually bid this project last May at the direction of the FAA in pursuit of the funding that turns out wasn't available. Um so we actually have a bid in hand on this project. Um we are past our hundred and twenty days to hold it, but I'm working very closely with the low bidder to see if those prices will still hold. So um if that works out, that would be the best-case scenario for everyone. We could get started as soon as the grant's in place. The money's pretty secure. So if we do end up in a rebid scenario, I will be back in front of the board to discuss what those what the rebid looks like. Um and the FAA understands that that's probably gonna increase the cost a little bit, but shouldn't be any additional cost to the county at that point, because again, the local match is covered by the Fund for Aviation.
Any questions? Public, have any questions, comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion. We'll take them one at a time. Item twelve is a motion, thirteen is a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty-four FAA AIP grant application for re- rehabilitate apron and taxiway B bidding and construction project at the Austin Airport for the estimated FFA funding amount of three hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and twenty-five, twenty-five thousand, and Lander County to match twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, and the authorized county manager to sign.
Okay, so I have a motion.
A second.
In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, another motion for thirteen?
I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty-four FAA bill funding grant application for rehabilitate apron and taxiway B bidding and construction project for the Austin Airport for the estimated FFA funding amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand and Lander County to match twenty-two thousand, two hundred, and authorize the county manager to sign.
One second.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. We'll move on to item fourteen.
Sorry, I have one more.
We'll be busy here at the airport.
That's all right, David. All right, so for discussion of possible actions to approve, disapprove fiscal year twenty-four FFA HIP grant application for runway four dash twenty-two, uh the PAPs and REI elves, and replace beacon and and replace beacon and tower. Uh bidding and construction project at the Battle Mountain Airport for an estimated FAA funding amount of five hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, and Lander County match of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and authorized county manager's assignment.
All right, so FAA loves their acronyms. So we have what are called the precision approach path indicators. Those are your box lights here at the end of the runway so that you know if you're coming into the runway at the right glide slope. Uh they're actually at the other end are some FAA-owned VASSIs, which is visual approach slope indicators. These are from about the late seventies. Um these are pretty out of style now. So as part of the project, which has already been designed, we will remove these existing systems, um which are aging, failing, need constant maintenance, and we will replace them with new LED PAPI systems. So they'll be replaced at the same time. They'll be of the same vintage. That'll hopefully help maintenance. Um the LED systems uh tend to not require a lot of maintenance, so they don't generate a lot of heat, so bulbs don't burn out. Um and then at the end, we will put what are called reels, runway end identifier lights. They're flashing lights that point up and out so that when aircraft come in in less than ideal conditions, they can positively identify the runway end. So um those are based on recommendations from NDOT every time they've come to look at the airport. Uh the reels are a big priority for them. So uh that project's been designed, the PAPs and reels, that's what we did this year. Um we're just going into final design uh to stay on schedule to bid this spring. We'll also incorporate the beacon and tower. The reason that wasn't in, um so here's the beacon and tower. The reason that wasn't in our design was because we were waiting for that cultural resources report on the tower, which has been completed. So um like I said, we'll continue to communicate with Bert and Donnie regularly on what comes of that tower. Um we have some direction, so that's super helpful. Um and then uh we're probably looking at uh late summer, possibly early fall for construction. So there's some lead time on getting these items in, and since they're on the primary runway, we want to make sure we're coordinating with BLM in case we have a busy fire season.
All right, thank you, David. Any questions, comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four FFA AIP grant application for runway four twenty-two, four dash twenty-two, PAPIS and REL, REILS, and replace beacon and tower bidding and construction project at the Battle Mountain Airport for an estimated FFA funding amount of five hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, and Lander County match of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and authorize the county manager to sign.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, David.
Perfect. Thanks, Mitch.
Appreciate you.
Have a great Christmas.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, we'll move into item fifteen. Uh for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the renewal of the tier-two contract between Lander County and Deborah Ames Ames Law for the conflict indigent defense services pursuant to Lander County plan for the provision of indigent services at a rate of two hundred dollars per hour in a contract and contract terms of January first, two thousand and twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Beacon Sullivan for the record. Um this is just a renewal. She's currently doing the services now, but we are increasing it. It is at a hundred and fifty an hour right now, and we're increasing it to two hundred.
So how many hours did we pay her last year to help us on this?
Um I I don't know off the top of my head. I can get that number for you, but it's pretty minimal. Uh she's the second tier, so we don't have anyone in the first tier right now. We're looking, this is helping us get an attorney to fill that. So right now, if Kyle conflicts out, she takes the case. But once we get someone in the first-tier spot, they'll be first in line, and then she-
So my question would be if there if this very rarely used, why why is she asking for a fifty dollar an hour raise? I mean-
She didn't ask for that. We gave that to her because that is what we put the first-tier contract out to all the other attorneys at, because we're having a hard time filling it. So we thought it was fair to-
Okay.
-increase hers.
Good enough. Any questions? Questions, comments, public? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal of the tier-two contract between Lander County and Deborah Ames Ames Law for conflict indigent defense services presented to the Lander County plan for the provision of indigent defense services at a rate of two hundred dollars per hour and the contract terms of January first, twenty-twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
One second.
Okay, a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into item sixteen for discussion and possible action to choose a date to combine a planning commission meeting with a Lander County commissioner.
Yes, Commissioner. So I believe I sent you guys a couple of emails, and uh we just haven't really locked that down. And being a short one commissioner today probably doesn't help us much either, but we need some solid dates so we can combine this meeting, give it advertised, and uh try to work through some of this.
Yeah, exactly. So so we're gonna it'll go concurrently with one of our commission meetings. Is what we'll do, we'll break out and then have it.
If you guys would like, we can do it entirely separate, make a whole day of it. I don't know that you want to combine it with the commission meeting because there's-
I was gonna say, because it could be lengthy, right?
It could be pretty lengthy. That's why um we were thinking like a a Friday or um even an off Thursday and make it a whole day, because this there's a lot to go through. And uh I would like to bring in somebody that would moderate the discussion. That way we stay kind of on topic.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with it. Just uh you had proposed a couple of dates. Either they were in the email. I don't remember what they were, actually.
It was the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth.
So that'd be a Tuesday?
Fridays.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at December. Um the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth?
That's what worked for the the planning commission best.
Um I'd be good with the first first one, the nineteenth. What's on the clip like you guys?
Fine.
Nineteenth works?
Yeah, let's set it up for the nineteenth.
We will relay that to the planning commission, and uh hopefully we get everybody in attendance.
Good.
Shelby, will you please send me a rip? Thank you, I will put it on my-
You bet. We will.
Okay, we're good?
Yep.
All right, we'll move to item seventeen.
What time?
Planning. Uh review, consideration, and possible action on zone change request number twenty-three dash zero zero three-two filed by Lander County to change the zoning of APN zero one zero dash six three oh dash one one from A three Farm and Ranch District to M Industrial District and APNs zero one one dash two nine zero dash one zero and zero one one dash two nine zero dash one one. Uh from A two five acre agriculture district to M Industrial District to allow for future industrial development opportunities. This was approved by the planning commission on November fifteenth with no additional conditions.
Come on, commissioners, thank you. Uh Shelby, not for the record. Uh so these are our properties uh that the rail park was going on and now that the M Hydro is interested in. Um so there was discussion amongst a few staff members uh to go ahead and just rezone these uh to industrial because they're agriculture now, and that kind of fits with our uh future development plans.
Okay. Um all right, any questions? Public, have any questions, comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the zone change request number twenty-three dash zero zero two three two fil- filed by Lander County to change the zoning on APN zero one zero dash six three zero dash one one from A three Farm and Ranch District to M Industrial District and APNs S zero eleven two dash two ninety dash ten and zero eleven dash two ninety eleven. From A two five acre agriculture district to M Industrial District to allow for future industrial development and opportunities. This would approve the planning commission November fifteenth with no additional conditions.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we'll move into eighteen. Review, consideration, and possible action on request to combine parcels and approve subdivision number twenty-three dash zero zero two eight filed by Casey and Amanda Kelly to combine APNs zero zero three dash one one two dash two one, zero zero three dash one one two dash twenty-two, and zero zero three dash one one two dash twenty-three into one point eight six acre parcel within an R-one single-family residential zoning district. This was approved by the planning commission on November fifteenth with the following conditions. One, map to be recorded with the Lander County Recorder's Office within one year of approval by the Lander uh County Board of Commissioners.
Shelby, not for the record again. Um so the Kellys own these three parcels in Kingston. They're planning on building a single family residence with a shop, uh so they would just like to combine those to have a little bit extra space.
Okay, questions? Public, have any questions, comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the request to combine parcels and approve subdivision number two-three dash zero zero two eight filed by the by Casey and Amanda Kelly to combine APNs S zero zero three dash one one two dash two one, zero zero three, one one, one twelve, dash twenty-two, and zero zero three, one twelve, dash twenty-three into one point eight six acre parcel within the R-one single-family residential zone district. This would approve the by the planning commission on November fifteenth with the following conditions. One, map to be recorded with the Lander County Recorder's Office within one year of approval by the Lander County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so I have a motion.
One second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to nineteen. Uh update from the National Resource Officer Pam Harrington regarding any past, current, and future projects.
Any chance I could go to the end, because I have an eleven o'clock with the Robertson? Or I could do it in a minute.
No, that's fine. Uh we'll just go ahead and we'll come back to that nineteen.
Okay, thanks. I'll be back in-
Okay, you're fine, yeah.
With fifteen.
No worries. And we'll move to twenty. Public Works Director, update from Public Works Director Don Prince regarding past, current, and future projects.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Don Prince? Okay. Our new water treatment plant over here at well six, uh, uh, jeez, Tuesday. No, no, it wasn't Tuesday, sorry. It was last week. We tested the well through the treatment storage and the backwash cycle to the tank. It's working. Um we had SVP on site for training. Uh Kim with SBC liked the plant, said it's uh easy to operate. Um we're gonna do an official startup, put the system online um right after the first of the year. But we will not be running it full-time at that time because we do not have the demand for the water right now. So more or less uh in the spring, we'll go full-time with it. gonna do an official startup, put the system online um, right after the first of the year. But we will not be running it full time at that time because we do not have the demand for the water right now. So more or less in the spring, we'll go full time with it for the summer months and stuff. We'll go from there. And we'll be shutting it off on a on a, well, the schedule. That way it'll prolong the the life of the media and stuff. So we're gonna try stretching this out as long as we can. So um, the new lift station off Allen Road, we're in the final testing. Uh, Monday, the eighteenth. Pardon me, I'm a little sick today. Um, we've already tested the pumps to the treatment plant that are working. We plan on putting it online next week. Uh, and that should be good to go, and that'll take a lot of strain off the separate lift station over here. Um, Marty's still working on the master plan. He should have it uh, back to us here real shortly. I'm hoping by the first of the year. I'm really hoping so. In the sink, pardon me.
That's an updated five-year master plan.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, safe routes to school. They're slowing down for the winter. Um, they're planning on finishing up what they got going right now this week, and then they're gonna uh, probably stop and come back after the holidays, the first of the year, and they're gonna start uh, start back up on a weather-based deal, and they're gonna hit uh, some of the harder properties that were that we've been kind of putting off that have the bigger fences and all that stuff that need moved. The West Community, Nevada Energy has come to the table with us with the design. Um, I know there was a couple of issues we're trying to work out with them. Um, we're hoping to go to bid with that on phase one and two by the end of January. Um, tennis courts, did you want to hit on that?
I want to.
I can hit on it. Um, we've been working on the tennis courts over here. They've uh, demoed them, um, tore the fence down, demoed them. Uh, they've poured the new slabs. We're got a ninety-day wait for the cure on the slabs, and we'll go in there and paint them, and hopefully by next week that we fenced again to keep people off my, you know.
Aren't those tennis courts slash pickleball courts?
Yes, yes.
Just wanna make sure we look at it.
Yes, they'll be lined. Yeah, yeah.
They'll be lined.
Yep. Okay. Then we got a couple paving projects that uh, we're gonna hope to be going to bid by the end of January, and they'll be done in the spring. We hope to get them this year by November, but it just didn't work out that way.
What paving projects are those?
We got uh, Clark Road out there on Hilltop, Arabian Road, and then a little bit of expansion up here on the Hilltop Road where the connecting road meets up to it. So-
Did we uh, did we ever get roads fixed up in Hilltop, Lewis, and all that up there? Do we we have roads through there now?
Yes, yes. They've been fixed, but they probably need touched up again after some of the weather we've had.
Were we able to save the 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 original road, or did we have to make it?
No, no, no. Yeah. Yeah, it's a huge difference up there, Brian, if you've been up there. So, yeah, the old, the old roads way up, parts of the old roads way up here, and some of it's washed out way down. You know, it's it's amazing if you go up there and look, so.
Cool. All right. Anybody have any questions for Don?
I do.
Yes.
I know. Miranda Tremaine for the record. I was just wondering if we could get an update on the rodeo grounds in Austin and have it set for the record so that we can move forward on it. I do have to start pulling sponsorships as of the first, so I just wonder if we could come to an agreement since we have a plan.
Brian, will you open the next unit to please?
Yeah. Um, Don, are you done with twenty?
Well, I can kind of help out with this.
Would it be under, is it under twenty-one or under twenty, what she's asking?
I think it's under both.
Is it under kind of both? Okay, so I'll open up twenty-one concurrently here. So update from Rec Center Director Sean Baker regarding past, current, future projects, and or events. Okay?
Okay. Good morning, Commissioner. And Miranda, we'll start with your question first. Um, the bucking shoots are down there, and we do plan on getting down there this spring to put them in. So um, we've talked to Donnie and Bert. We both have a plan. Um, I don't have an exact date. I just know it will, this spring we will be done then.
Okay, and then do we have a backup plan if that is not met? So if we have the bucking shoots, we can get them set, and then can we get portables if it doesn't work? So we can have a backup plan set in stone for us to move forward. It was a very successful event for us.
We don't have a backup plan because it's a budget issue at that point. I think it was like twenty thousand to rent them, correct?
That's what I'm asking.
So our backup plan is having the ones we bought.
So it was, it was-
Yes, yeah. So I planned before next July, before your event, I we plan on having those put in.
It was ten thousand dollars for the portable bucking shoots, and if we had the bucking shoots, we'd only need the back pins, so it would be cut down significantly. So that is an option in case something does go wrong, because we did have a treacherous snow year where it was hard to get to the rodeo grounds. It wiped out a lot of it, you know? And I think that if we just have somewhat of a backup plan, me going and getting sponsorships isn't gonna come down to what I had last year. Like, well, why did you pull sponsorships if you're not, you know, you're not set in stone? So I guess I just want kind of all the i's dotted and the t's crossed.
Okay. Um, right now, we don't have a backup plan except to put those bucking shoots in. I mean, it is a chamber event. Um, the commission has, we have bought the equipment to put in, and we are going to get it in. I can't, beyond that, I don't know if you want to get a backup plan on your own.
Well, I guess I was just asking if there was a budget of some sort that you have, or if I do need to pull more sponsorships for that.
For a backup plan?
Yeah.
There's no, our plan is to have those bucking shoots in.
Okay.
So I, if there's a backup plan you want to put in place, or if you want to pull more sponsorships, I think that's on the Austin Chamber to decide that.
But this is not only just a chamber. This is a community, because Austin, unfortunately in Austin, the the chamber is the only, the only one that has anything going on. You know, we're a nonprofit. It does take a lot. It took us twenty-five thousand dollars to put on the rodeo. It was a total budget of thirty-three thousand dollars for us to do the rodeo, and we came up with all, you know, most of it. Pulling sponsorships is hard.
Well, the county covered the portables.
And that's, I'm, I, yeah, that was great, and it was very successful, and I'm thankful for that tremendously. I just want to make sure that I have, like I said, everything ready to go, and just knowing that this is gonna be okay for me to move forward with my job.
So budgets are in February, so by February, we will have a plan in place.
Okay, that's what I was asking. So are you guys gonna budget?
Whether we need to budget and talk to the commission about budgeting, or you will have to.
Perfect. That's all I was asking.
Not us, but we will, we will have a plan by February.
Depending on the weather, we should, if it's a mild winter, we'd be able to get down there sooner. It just depends on the weather, so.
Yeah, and that's for-
And that wouldn't make a difference on the backup plan. Our plan is-
Right.
Since we've been in there, it's been budgeted, so I would not want to budget any more money for something that we've already paid for. Um, and we would, having a backup plan is fruitless if if you can't get it, you can only get in there when you can get in there, and they're gonna get done by the time of the event, bottom line. And I wouldn't want to budget any more money for something that is going to, because we're not gonna have the snow there in July, or, you know, when her event is and what they-
But it snowed until June.
Pardon me?
It snowed until June.
Well, but was it movable?
Oh, my goodness.
Backup, a backup plan's not gonna make any difference on backup shoots because it, you still have to get in there to get it done. So whether it's the shoots that we paid for or portable ones, we have to have those done.
We will.
So.
So they're sitting in the yard down there. The shoots are in. By February, we'll have a concrete plan on moving forward with the install of the shoots that are there.
And the backup pins, correct?
I think is what we're saying is that ultimately, if uh, if you want a certain backup plan, you need to budget for it. Put the chamber in February, come before this commission, and ask them for additional funds for a backup plan, but we, but we can't-
This is a community sense.
Yeah, but we, we is all, our whole plan is to install them shoots before your event. That is what our set goal is.
And not just the shoots, but the back pins is like-
Correct.
The entire setup.
That's our, that is, that is our plan and our backup plan, all in one.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, good.
Hi, Commissioner.
Don, did you have any more on your?
No, I was there.
Okay, Sean.
Sorry, Commissioner.
You're fine.
Uh, so surplus, which Donnie and I were talking about today, since we started, we have brought in seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Um, in Austin, we are surplus in most of the stuff down there that needs to be surplus. There's some stuff that didn't sell that we'll have to bring back for this commission to decide, scrap it, or we'll come up with a plan on what we want to do with the stuff that we can't sell. Um, so I just wanted to touch on the surplus there. Uh, let's move to the Rec Center. Rec Center, we've been having high school P for the last two weeks. Um, it's been pretty busy. Uh, over by the Rec Center, the senior league field is starting to get demoed, so you'll start seeing the new fence go up and the new ball field fencing going. Um, uh, library in Austin, the Gridley Store, the roof has been replaced on it. Uh, the split system went in yesterday, so the heat's working. Um, we're bringing in some carpet and paint to paint the walls and put uh, tile in. Um, so within a month or two, the libraries in Austin should be back up and running. Becky, you have anything to add to that? No? Good. Okay. Um, another thing I wanted to retouch on, and I know I brought this up in an update before, but I just, I wasn't sure I brought it back before this commission to uh, finalize, is the Rec Center, the Civic Center, the libraries, the landfill, all have credit card and point-of-sale systems. So all the credit card systems are put in place in these for the community to use. So anyone can take their credit card to the landfill, swipe it there. Um, I just, I know in one of my updates, I told you we were working on it, but I never brought it back to tell you everything is complete. Um, another thing is, as we get closer to budgets, which is just right around the corner, if there are any projects that this commission would like to see come back before this board, um, if you could talk to Bert, Donnie, or I, and that way we can start gathering numbers to put back before this board, so you guys can decide as a whole on what projects you want to move forward with. But February is right around the corner. It does take some time to get quotes, so if there's anything you guys have in mind, please let us know. Um, Christmas alert. I want to touch on that just real quick. Ms. Kathy Ancho has been doing this for years, and she's uh, has, I have some big shoes to fill when it comes to this project, but uh, we've been working on it this year. Um, this year so far, we have fifty-one families, nineteen seniors, a hundred and twenty-six kids. Um, there are sixty-eight turkey dinners we have collected from businesses, nineteen ham dinners. That leaves us with eighteen extra dinners. So if anyone knows, anyone that's in need this Christmas, please send them our way, because we do have extra Christmas meals for those families. Um, Sunday, the seventeenth at noon, we are handing out presents to everyone that, um, and all the people that have adopted families, thank you too. But uh, anyone wants to show up Sunday at noon and help hand out presents, that'd be much appreciated, but I'm just putting that out there. Um, that concludes my update.
Okay. I'd like to, before we get off, uh, the uh, Christmas lighting, because I knew it fell under your scrutiny, and you had some help. I just would like to give you a personal shout out. It was outstanding. Had a lot of comments from people in the community that it was a spectacular event. I've never been to one, but I was convinced I needed to go to this one. I went, I was like, wow.
It was beautiful.
It was pretty impressive. Thank you, guys. And I will pass that along. I, and again, my staff and everyone, so I will definitely pass that along, but they, I uh, and I always say this, I put things in front of my staff, and they scratch their head, and they're looking at me like, you want us to do what? You know, and uh, but they are, we do truly have a tremendous team.
I don't know if any of you over there, and I'm gonna interrupt because I don't want to forget. I don't know if any of you guys were over by the ice skating rink, but there was a ton of kids on there, and when that snow started falling, they all thought it was real snow, and they were, they were ecstatic. I, myself and the person next to me actually started crying. It was so sweet, because they actually thought it was snow. And so they, yeah. And then when the fireworks started, they were just in awe, like they'd never seen fireworks before. So, and the thing with Lou and Sally Lamere was absolutely awesome. Um, and a tribute of what they've done for this community. So, um, yeah, to, you know, everyone and your staff, thank you, because that really was a beautiful um, event. I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for recognizing that, uh, Mr. Sparks. And I, I would also like to add to that, that literally we took a picture and sent that, because we were at Fallon's Christmas tree lighting last year, and thanks to Sean, he grabbed that whole thing, and it just, it happened. I didn't think it was possible, right? He has great staff that jumped on board with him, but it's, it's truly just, we have great people at the county, and and thank you, Sean, for making that happen. But he's, he's not very good at taking credit. Um, but literally, it fell on his shoulders. He started knocking on doors, and uh, some of his staff did the same, found all the contacts and and made it happen. I didn't think it would come together as well as it did. It was beautiful. So thank you.
Yeah, you created a little bit of a situation for yourself, because you know what? Next year, it has to be slightly better.
All right. It's a challenge I'm willing to accept, so.
All right, so we'll move on to item twenty-two for discussion, possible action to give direction to proceed with the process of Lander County implementing their own Lander County bank slash credit union.
So Commissioners, I uh, put this on, and hopefully Colt will come up here and speak to it. He's gonna be our, our champion of this project, uh, if approved by the commission. Some of the thoughts behind this are, you know, the county has, has a fair amount of money, as you guys seen in the, in the update from, from our auditor, and we uh, we have some, some pretty big ideas that could be some of the biggest givebacks to our community uh, that, that can be given back if, if you want to talk about giving back. So I think between Mr. Martinez and uh, and Colt, they can kind of clean up what I've just laid out there.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Colt Nelson.
Eric Martinez.
Uh, just to give you a little bit of uh, context, and again, really on the early phases of this, uh, this was a goal that was put down on our comprehensive economic development strategy, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-five. It was uh, on there with not a lot of uh, thought moving forward, and there has been some discussion and some research conducted to find out if there was any possibility that we could attract an alternate financial institution to Battle Mountain as one of the comprehensive economic development strategies. So with that being said, uh, we have reached out to a group, the Classic City Equity, that is in your packets there that you got, and they come up with a four-phase plan. And right now, we're before you just to ask, do we want to go through with the discovery process, which is phase one of this project, to see really the, the needs analysis, cost analysis, and do research as far as what would this bring to our community? What is the potential revenue and, and that type of thing? But that, that first phase comes with a cost. It was fifteen thousand dollars to put that on. Uh, that was a four to six hour discovery session where they, these bankers come, there's four of them. I think two of them are bankers, and two of them are financial experts, but basically come and have a session with uh, with us, including the community, to really look at this and see what it would, this untapped market opportunity for us if, if Lander County had their own type of credit union mutual fund bank type of thing. Uh, and in that workshop, I think that discovery would be, you know, is this worth it going forward? And I think the cost analysis, as well as the needs analysis, would be met with that workshop, to see if we even want something like this. So at this point, I believe, Bert, we're asking for permission to move forward with phase one of the four phases. Um, total cost of this whole thing, if we put a bank in, is around a hundred thousand dollars, I think, with this group helping us. Not saying that you go with this group, but the first step in this is just see what's the feasibility of this. Will this work for I personally believe it has huge potential for, for a lot of things we're doing, and and a, and a great place to, even speaking as a citizen, a great place to even invest on your own funds that I don't, I wouldn't invest in other banks, but I would invest if one, if, if Lander County was backing it and had some control of it.
Yes, these are some of the things I like about, number one, is we have a bank building that we own that's just sitting down there empty, whether we bring somebody in or we put our own bank in. And then we're always faced with the problem of, you know, when you have a hundred and seventy million dollars setting in other investments, banks, what? Was to keep the state from coming in and saying, hey, you guys need to help us out here. You know, you guys are flush, and, and because uh, back in two thousand eight, I had, we had a senator announced, came in and addressed the commission right during budget time. That gave us that spiel. It's like, you know what? It's, it's great that we can all be, you know, we got one another's backs in this state, but he was prepping us for the fact that if they wanted to sweep some of that money, they could sweep that money. So I like the idea, because if we, we take it and we put it into a bank, we were, number one, we're investing into our, our, our county, right? Our people, um, which gives us more control of it. I think it takes it out of the purview of coming, being able to come in and take it, right? Because now it's working. Um, I think there's a lot of uh, upsides to this, that I think is definitely something that would be uh, smart to um, to spend the money on to, to, to hear this spiel, because uh, the feedback I've gotten from a lot of community members, they'd like to see another bank here in Battle Mountain, you know? And if we were to do it, a Lander County bank, it'd be set up right. I can guarantee you that. It would be set up right. And uh, there's a lot of people that have lost a lot of faith in financial institutions in the last several years, right? I mean, I don't know about you guys, but myself, I've been with this credit union for twenty-some years out of Reno, and um, I went in during COVID, you know, because of uncertain market times, and asked for some money, and they're like, well, number one, it's gonna be two or three days before I get your money. I'm like, what? What are you talking about? It's my money. I want my money. Give me some of my money, right? But it was just things like that, that I would like to see. I mean, if we controlled it, that, that, those would be the things we wouldn't do, right? We'd, we'd have it structured and set up properly to where um, it's what a bank's supposed to be, in, you know, my mindset. So those are my two cents on it.
Well, and I know that with Six Lac, when um, they, when they were trying to take our net proceeds the last time, um, that was the biggest thing, is they wanted to come in and sweep that mon- that money, which was just beyond my belief. And they did that, I don't know if anybody remembers, but they did that um, at one o'clock in the morning with nobody having any input on that. And they, I, and so they- And they, I, and so they came in and changed, changed that, tried to change that whole thing with the setup with that proceeds and the amount that we were going to get. In the eleventh hour, we didn't even have a chance to protest it. And when I asked if we could protest it at that time with that governor, I was told it was too political. And it was unbelievable that they could come in and do that at the eleventh hour and we had absolutely no recourse on our money. And so um, if, you know, by doing this first phase, we find out that that money is protected. And they can't come in and sweep it at any time, that um, aside from our rainy day fund, protect our money because um, it is, I mean. I mean, that's just disgusting and that um, at any time we can have, it's been, you know, just because of the COVID and see what it did to everyone. Dane Gaming and everyone, nobody had money, so they wanted ours. And so I think it's at least worth investigating to see if that's something, I mean, I don't see it any different than Elko Credit Union, um, truly. And um, likely one of the examples is Thomas went in um, to try to get some of his money out of the bank and they told him three weeks. He couldn't have his money for three weeks, um, cause he answered the question wrong. I told him, do not say it's because of COVID and he did and they said, nope, you can't have your money and he could not get his money. I was absolutely appalled. Marion Philippini told me that that was just exactly when the banks failed and they locked the banks and all of those people never got their money back. She said, this is just exactly what happened, except the difference is at least we got our money and things changed. But um, you know, she said, you know, this is just exactly, my dad went to get it, opened the door and the door was locked and nobody got their money and that was the end of it. Um, so just food for thought that that stuff can happen. And um, I'm gonna add on to this just because of this thing with COVID. My daughter was on, and this isn't classified, so I can't say it, um, she was on the USS Ronald Reagan, she was given like three minutes to call. And she was the one that said, you better get in to get some money because at this time, the east coast is shutting down and at this time, the west coast is shutting down. And she was just exactly right on those, uh, the upper command said whoever can notify their family because that's when they started. The lights start basically going out exactly at the time and so we just don't realize what is going on around us. So anytime we can protect ourselves and.
And I think something that we're kind of looking at and, and Aaron hopefully can, can jump on this as well as is spurring along local economic development. Um, you know, if you look at the interest rates right now, they're between seven to nine percent if somebody goes to get a, a home loan or, or something like that, I believe that's close to the number anyway. Um, whereas if we had our own institution, we might be able to give it to our, to a Lander County resident or somebody who's gonna purchase something in Lander County, start a business, do things of that nature for. You know, say three percent and still be making money on our money more than we would be where we're currently at. Um, these are just, just a lot of open areas that we need to look into, discover, see what we can do to, to help spur on our local economy and, and, you know, help out the families locally. Cause I think some of them loans go from like, Aaron ran the numbers the other day sitting in my office. And uh, you know, like three hundred thousand dollar loan goes from like fifteen hundred dollars to three thousand dollars, the payment per month. Um, based on that interest rate. So it, it really does leverage our funds as a county to, for economic development or gives that potential, so.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure if that's close to where.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let me take you on that real quick, Aaron, is yeah, and that's, that's the thing too is, cause we, I mean, I've personally been brainstorming like, how do we give back to taxpayers? And it's, it's kind of been a, it's been a kind of a, not sure how to go about it, this would be a perfect way, what better way, right? It's like, you, you invest, you take the tax paid dollars, you, you have your bank, you're investing in the Lander County. You have somebody that wants to buy or purchase a home, everywhere else is nine percent, they can, they can uh, borrow it out of their own Lander County Bank for three percent. That is a give back, I mean, that is a, that is a total upside, um, I just wanted to mention that, so sorry to cut you off.
Abs- no, no, you're fine and you're all on the right page, we're talking local control, we're trying to control our own future and that is where this come from. You know, you guys give me a lot of opportunities and one of them is to work with your, uh, previously with Lita. And so during that process and me being able to work with them, you know, I'm an entrepreneur, I'm thinking about different ways. And, and that's where this come up is, you know, this is stemmed from about a year ago where I was trying to do exactly what you're saying. How could Lander County truly affect their resident? Safe House and Schools Project is one of them, where we're trying to up the frontages to make, beautify the area. But I thought, you know, we have this other tool, what, what can we do? And we started thinking about this credit union idea. And it really comes down to controlling your own future and investing in your own community. If a loan goes bankrupt under your bank, at least the property is in Lander County and then maybe future wise, you're looking outside Lander County. Bert's exactly right, I think that you could give your residents a leg up on the loan opportunities. If, if my house payment somewhere else is, is thirty-five hundred and, and everyone over here is paying seventeen hundred, they're taking home or keeping that money in their pocket. Lander County usually is getting like one percent on your investments, at least in a loan situation, you're tripling that and maybe three percent or four percent. So there's a lot of opportunity, there's a lot of questions that still yet to be answered. We've looked at several different options, whereas maybe every Lander County resident is part of the co-op within the credit union. And then maybe that credit union yields a profit dividend and then that dividend goes to each co-op member. And so there's a lot of opportunity outside of just saving money on loans, we could really give people a leg up and you could control that funding. Because you have the muchetary means to achieve that. We've looked at other aspects of eliminating FDIC insurance by having the bank sponsor its own insurance program. That federal relinquishment opens up a huge plethora of opportunities outside of what we're talking about today. So uh, I, one, I thank the county manager for allowing me the opportunity just to be participating in this idea that I come up with and. And, and, and Colt and, and his wife and everyone trying to just get those answers. And, and I think that Colt's come up with a great phase one because we've hit that brick road, I am not a bank specialist. The only reason I'm up here is because I had a cool opportunity to come up with an idea and these guys are, are trying to come up with a way to run through it. So I think this phase one is absolutely the way to go and I'm really excited to see what comes out of it.
Okay, Aaron. Um, any questions?
So as a taxpayer in Lander County, I would like to know why we couldn't take that amount of money that you guys are saying that we have to start a credit union. And put it back into our communities for our economic development, I don't know, I, you know, I'm speaking for Southern Lander County. Um, we have no opportunity economically grow because our buildings are falling in left and right, you know, we. If we could get down there and actually look at some of the buildings, we would have to probably shut half of them down. We don't have any housing developments, we don't have anything and I think that if we do say, say we do have as much money as you guys claim we do to start a bank. I think that we should look at putting it back into the communities.
We, we currently do with a lot of our budget items, so that's, that's where the budget comes in, this is a kind of separate and independent of what you're speaking of. And I, and I'm not trying to be combative, I'm just, I'm just making sure that we delineate the two. Like the, the, the budget items are what address what you're, what you're speaking of and this is.
I guess my biggest thing is so, you know, I sat on Lita, we, you know, we started the um, Main Street Project or whatever. For our business improvement program, which is great, I love that, that's awesome, we need that for our communities. But also, there's, there's a lot more to all of this, you know? We, we only were granted so much money for that project, why wouldn't we be able to up that to improve a lot more and have that option? Cause we're budgeted so minimal for that. I think I would understand a little bit more on the bank side if there was more money poured back into those budget line items.
And the only thing I'd comment on is um, this is a different tool, like Bert's saying, kind of what you're talking about is a budgetary item. What we're looking at is a tool to spur things beyond that. So as an example, this bank could be the hub for businesses. If you try to get a loan as a business, especially a startup business, it's almost impractical to even try. Whereas this could be an opportunity for a new business to come into Lander County, potentially in Austin. They get a loan through Lander County, next thing you know, that startup business has more capital opportunity than anywhere in the country. So this is a different tool to spur economic development and understand where you're coming from, where it's like, hey, where's this budgetary outlay and who's getting what? But in reality, this is a whole different vehicle for that type of economic growth and, and the things that you're talking about, infrastructure upgrades and building upgrades. Those have to be focused on a different conversation.
So is there another county in the United States that's done this?
Uh, yes, there is a municipality, actually a few in the country that have been able to achieve this status, yes.
Is it a, exactly, is it a business that's ran?
It is a private organization on, in Washington and then actually here in Nevada, there is a municipality that has its own um, financial institution.
I think it would be beneficial if we sent out a survey of some sort to the public and to the community and to our taxpayers and get a little bit of um, feedback from them as well.
That, that's what phase, Amanda, that's what phase one is actually, is that we're gonna invite the community and definitely talk about that. And, and I think it, it is aligned with what you're talking about, actually.
Specify it, and I do sit on the planning commission as well, so I'm.
Sure.
I, I am involved in this, I am interested in it, I think that it is important, we have to have economic development. But I think, like I said, you know, you dot your i's and cross your t's and make sure that there are other steps that we can take before we do make this move.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And to be clear, in, in Austin alone, there's the current two million dollar building allocation that's being completed on the health clinic and community center. The Austin realignment, which I'll bring up in public comment, is another investment that's kind of a piece that needs to go forward before any other investments go. And so there's actually quite a bit focused on Austin.
And I don't want it just to be directed at Austin, I, I, when I speak, I speak of Southern Lander County as a whole, you know? And if that's Kingston's, uh, you know, they want to grow and they want to have that opportunity as well, I think that we should be working with them, even if they're their own township.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One, one more thing to add in the conclusion kind of this, whether it's a mutual savings bank in Lander County, it is aimed at serving the community. And there was a lot of work done on this from our county manager, looking into what kind of fit what this original idea was. So this isn't just out of the pie in the sky ideas, this is really vetted to this point of these four phases. In line with what would work with Lander County and our economic growth. Uh, it's just an untapped market opportunity and by the way, credit type union banks are all over. And they do this type of thing that are controlled locally. So it makes a, a meaningful difference for even Southern Lander County, Lander County in whole as general. Uh, and the mission is really to meet the community needs, that's what it's about. So I think it fits for, for all of our economic growth and I think it has just huge potential. Again, we're just in the discovery phase, phase one.
And by all means, these are just ideas, if you have an idea that's high, you know, that should be on the upper above that list, by all means, propose them. These are just spitball sessions that have occurred, that have morphed into further, further investigation and understanding. So if there's another idea out there, we'd love to, to hear it.
Make sure.
Have a question, Nolena Castellanos, how did you choose this company to use? And I asked that because when I pulled them up, they showed they did that business startup um, March of two thousand twenty-two, so they're not very old, so my question there experienced.
As far as Classic City Equity?
No, as far as you slog onto Georgia, cause that's where they're from, go to their state to find out when they started their business and it shows that they started their business in two thousand twenty-two.
That's a good question for them if, when they get here, but I, I'm not sure what business you're talking about.
I mean, I'd ask them before they get here, cause I'm gonna spend fifteen thousand dollars on a company that only has a year and a half experience. I mean, have we reached out to the other credit unions and asked them, like Elko, Winamaka, see who they use?
Elko's been contacted countless times to ask them that they, if they would come in here, um, and they have not moved forward on that and that's gone on for years. Um, and yeah, so yes, the other credit unions have.
So Elko, Winamaka, anybody else?
Yeah. So just to be clear, are you talking about Classic City Equity? The company that wants to come in and with Trent Wagner, the CEO of that banking institution?
Yes, these people right here that you said you're using to do these phases, started their business a year and a half ago.
Yeah, and, and I think a lot of that, what they, and they'll tell us this when they come. A lot of this was put together because of what's going on with our financial crisis in the United States right now. And they are uh, putting these in and building these and it could have, I didn't know, remember I'm the champion of this, just jumping in with the material. It could have been a year and a half ago, I don't know when they were established, but they have and are continuing to uh, drum up lots of business. Cause a lot of local communities want their own control of their banking, financial institutions, so could be relatively new.
I'm just, I would check into that because I think experience, if we're gonna pay the fly in the mouth from Georgia, wherever the heck your companies come from, I would double check their experience, because that's a lot of money to.
So, yes, if you look at their uh, their resumes, there's a, there's a, a lot of experience that comes with it. The company may have been formed there, but their, their resumes are pretty clear that they didn't start this in two thousand twenty-two. These people have been in this industry their entire career.
Who may have worked in it, but they, that was right there, started March of two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, no, I'm not questioning the, the start of the business, just the, the experience of what, what's behind it.
Well, similar thing was, so basically you're right, I think the start was just a frustration through the, the timeframe that we've just come from is. Uh, people are fed up with the financial institution, you get these people to come together to create this workable idea. Same thing with uh, an insurance company called Revolt Insurance, same thing, it rose out of COVID. And it's, it's comprised of like smart individuals that know the fuck, the business that want to give a, a good healthcare product to citizens, right? That we haven't been getting, so it's just, I, I see what she's saying, uh, but I do see there was, there was, there, that's, this whole thing that we went through just drove a lot of passion to. Put together things that work to where we have solutions for things that are broken, so.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, for the record Cynthia Mestreddy, and I have a question in regards to on the heels of the um, being hacked. I, I am a previous employee, um, that we really do need to put this out to all employees, ex-employees. And citizens of all of Lander County, southern and northern, I don't know why we do that, but in any case. Um, to put that out to them, if they want their county to go into a private business and become a business, I've never heard of that before for a county to do. Um, but it needs to be put out to everyone in regards to this before, you know, anything gets stunned. Step one, yes, is good, but everybody needs to know about step one, not just people who um, were employees, previous employees or anything like that. Based on the fact that we have this hacking system, just to, that's, so, you know, I think it really does need to be pushed out. So everyone knows about this and can talk about it and make their reservations known to everyone, their questions and stuff like that. In regards to the county becoming a private business.
So just uh, something that, that I think's important for, like, cause a lot of people mix what county government is. It is nothing more than big business with the people's money. Um, you know, ultimately, we, we operate at the, at the people's expense, so this is, nothing here happens without the people's money, so.
Community's input as well, correct?
Yeah, it's uh, and that's what we're here doing today, so.
So okay, let me just put this, I just, I mean, I understand your concern, so it's, it's as simple as this, we're looking at fifteen thousand dollars for the first phase. It wasn't too long ago that this board was confronted with doing a public survey for twelve thousand dollars, not a public survey, an employee survey for twelve thousand dollars and I objected to it. It could have been brought up to that, that should be put to every taxpayer to decide, you're spending their money and that should be put to every taxpayer. Seriously, we'd never get business done, we are elected to represent to the best of our ability the interests of taxpayers. And we're here because the majority of taxpayers wanted us here to act on their behalf and that's exactly what we're doing. I say, I understand your point, but you could, you could apply that to any time we spend taxpayer dollars. Why don't we put it out to the uh, the, the, the publics of Lander County, hey, we're getting ready to spend fourteen million dollars on a fire hall, you okay with it?
So your taxpayers and your community has the right to question you.
Absolutely, absolutely, you do, I'm just, I'm just trying to put the sense to it, let me finish saying what I'm saying.
Don't yell at me, right?
Okay, I'll give you the opportunity to talk when I'm not talking.
You're a commissioner and act like you're a commissioner, please.
I am, and I'm, and I'm addressing your question.
I demand respect as well.
Okay, so I'm just saying, to operate and do that, we would never get business done.
Okay, well, I'm telling you right now that I think it is very important that we get a survey. We do not have a representative for Southern Lander County, Kathy's gone. This is not something that I believe that is in the best interest for Southern Lander County.
Okay.
And I, like I said, please don't ever scream at me like that again.
Well, don't cut me off when I'm talking.
I didn't cut you off.
Enough, enough. So the biggest, there's several ways to be able to do that. Well, one thing is that you can sell, send out mailers, pay, if we're gonna pay this money, we can send out mailers to everyone, just like they do for an election year. So that everybody knows what this idea is. You can actually put it in the community um, information page that goes out there telling everybody that's what's going on. But with um, cause I'm all for the community knowing what's going on and there's several ways of doing that. And uh, I think that we're all smart enough that we can come to some kind of agreement ahead of time to how to make sure that all the people um, know what is going. ahead of time to how to make sure that all the people um know what is going on within this community, which and and the county, e- everyone, and I'm, which I am all for. So there those are simple solutions to put out that information to say, hey, what do you think? And you can actually even have a questionnaire on that and have be able to be sent back in, what what do you guys think? And we need this back by this date, so we have some idea to go on, those are simple solutions that just as an idea, and all this is is a is a just a a cell that's starting to just look at what we can do with different things. And so whether it be a starting a bank or um doing a program to reinvest in people's business so they can redo their storefront or the Main Street project, regardless of all of that, with the Main Street project, which I agree with a hundred and fifty percent, but at that time, when we're wanting to do that, we did not put that out to the taxpayers either, which we should have, what do you think? Because holy cow, boy, I got people telling me what they thought um about that, because they just thought it was going to be another Elko, so I mean, they're simp- without getting angry and everybody getting mad at one another. It's a waste of time to do that, we come together as a group and just say, okay, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna mail out a flyer, has what what information we have now to this point, what do you think? We get them back by a specific date and then we put it on the commission and we move forward. And that's, I mean, that's just the easiest way to do it.
So, Ken, I'm sorry.
Okay, I mean, I just, I think it's a waste of time for everyone to get their feathers ruffled when there's such a a simple solution to this, you know, um that doesn't, you know, we don't have to beat each other over the head about, we just say, this is what, if this is what, before we spend this money, we send out the very first of the year, we send out this flyer to everyone asking their opinion, they have to fill it out and send it back and it goes to every single taxpayer. And hopefully, they don't think it's a a um advertisement for a candidate and throw it in the garbage, but that's, I mean, at least at that point, we are trying to get it out and that we do it by announcement and get everybody, you know, on board as we can, so they can put their opinion and then move forward from that, so we don't have people thinking that we're doing something shady with their money or they want this done and we should have done that, because yelling and getting mad and everybody is just such a waste of time. And so before we go forward, my suggestion is we at least try that and see then what results we get back from people and then move forward.
So two things, this, we're not doing anything shady, could we have a?
I know.
We haven't, no, I'm just saying, we have an agenda that's put out and everybody can see it, right? And I've had I've had several calls on this item alone. Uh the other thing, as far as putting out the survey, again, you get a few people that might have a problem with it, a few people that might, you don't get a true sense of what the what the majority of Lander County feels, that's what we're representing and put up here to decide in, right?
And okay, so I respect that, but the difference between the agenda and actually just sending out a mailer um to people, which you can actually, just like Haney does, she pays a certain amount and just so often just sends out these mailers and they go out to everyone, it's fairly inexpensive in the big scheme of things. Um you can ask ten older people, fifteen, twenty, thirty older people, did you see the agenda? I don't even know where to look, and people are so out of touch with that stuff, for one, just like you said, they don't trust government and that means they don't trust us. And so by doing this, at least, you know, saying they could go and get the agenda is not going to cover, it's just not going to, and I think that thinking that, you know, it just, and I I'm not trying to be disrespectful, so please. I just think, I think you send out a flyer to every single post office box and mailbox in in Lander County and we try from that, because it truly is very inexpensive in the big scheme of things.
Well, the whole this, again, I draw us back to the twelve thousand dollar for an employee survey, which I was never for. We could have at that time opted, let's put a survey out to see if Lander County citizens wanna pay for that. Which in my my mindset, that's that's ridiculous, right? It just slows down the the way we operate, that's what this whole first phase is, is to bring these people in and everybody in the community, if they wanted to fill these chairs up, have the opportunity to sit down, ask the hard questions. And if we determine at the end of it, it's not what we want in Lander County, then that's what we'll have to face. But that's that is the form, but we're gonna have to be willing to spend the fifteen thousand dollars to see what is the potential upside of this, that's what I'm saying.
And I respect that, and I'm not, by by all means, I'm very intrigued by all of this, I really am, considering what went on in my family with the banks, but I just think that people, you know, um on something that truly is probably costs less than a thousand dollars to do, to send out, that we at least just try that and if we don't get any feedback, then we've crossed our t's and dotted our i's and we've done the best and we move forward on such, you know, because it, this will be a hot topic uh uh thing and they're automatically, by the time this person tells this person that tells this person that tells this person, if this story's changed a hundred times and I think just for us to keep the the things just, you know, clear, because it is a lot of money, that we just do something simple like that and go ahead.
So it's roughly, we send something out to every county resident, about three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars is what we pay in mailer fees, just to mail it out. Just I just wanted to put that in context.
Brian, one thing that might help a little bit too, I think it'd help everybody feel more at ease. Phase one is completely a discovery phase, I'd just like to read this into the record. It'll provide us four to six hours of discovery session in person that focuses on defining the needs of the market and community. Our community, our community members, including Southern Nevada, Southern Lander County. Is the opportunity acceptable to pursue? And what human capital uh and financial capital we needed to execute the plan from concept to execution? This will also focus on formation options like which regulator to choose, which corporate structure and startup board discussions of a board. It isn't Lander County owning their own bank and running it too, it's, this is a typically like a credit union bank, they have their own board, they have their own, now, does Lander County have some control of that? Yes, the taxpayers have control of that. So in this phase, it's just simply discovery, nobody's deciding anything, but unfortunately, it's fifteen thousand dollars to bring these folks in. And they are world renowned for what they do, if you look at their resumes, it's not just somebody that they pulled out of the sky, they're really good at what they do.
And I read, and they do, I read all of their, all this stuff, but like I said, just like you said, they, you know, everybody, by the time it gets around, nobody knows and then nobody participates. You know, that's my biggest fear is that we do this, you know, and you have this discovery for people to show up and then unfortunately, nobody shows up, 'cause we've done those before, um for various things and put it out there and no one shows up and still nobody knows what's going on, so I truly, honestly, I don't know what the answer, what the answer is.
This is, that's the thing, Kathy, do we spend the three thousand or whatever it was to mail these all out, you might get told back and that's people that basically don't wanna do it, so what do you do, you kibosh if you could tell people send back that?
No, no.
You you but you see.
Yeah, I understand, I respect that.
So but I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, is I think the first phase, that's that's where you really get into the meat of things, is that taxpayers hopefully fill up all these chairs and ask those hard questions and we can discuss it as a community, you know what I'm saying, rather than can putting the kibosh to it before we've even given it a chance to really look at what the potential upside of this thing is.
Right, because we don't know the answers to a lot of the hard questions that we have. And that's where this discovery allows everyone to truly understand, what does this encompass? So I actually like your mailer idea and if you could combine it with when we do the four hour discovery, bring all those.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's the opportunity then, is to ask those hard questions, 'cause we don't know what that startup capital is, we don't know really any of those hard questions.
No, that.
Maybe we could, I mean, if we if we did that, we brought these people in, maybe we could set it up as far as like a town hall session.
What would set up, how would you guys direct it?
Where you actually like, and and that is a good idea, maybe s- a flyer at that point, so to make sure people are aware that, hey, we're having this town hall, this is what we're discussing, these are some of the people that we're inviting in, you know, so, yes, ma'am.
So I was also wondering, what what is the rush on it right this second, if we could wait until, you know, elections come up and it just put be put on the ballot and then have it that way? I mean, that is an option for us to vote, that's how you guys are in the position you're in.
Great, all right, thank you.
I've got a couple things to point out. Um, one, with all the FAA stuff we got, I realize that's going to contract and so on. Um, well, we put the dollar amounts in there. This agenda item has no dollar amount. It would have, it should have probably had the fifteen thousand i- in the agenda item. Um, that's a fairly minor point. The other thing is, again, this is getting ahead, because as you say, you wanna do the first phase. When you get to actually doing this stuff, you're way over my pay grade, this is this is where you need somebody that does banking law, that needs to look it over, okay? So you will need outside counsel to be looking at this at some point. Okay, I mean, I know, I'm, I don't know that much about banking. Uh I know a few things, enough to know that you can get into trouble, I mean, we just had bank failures have been in the news in the not so distant past here. Um, so, uh just be careful what you're doing, that's.
Well, and there is a turn in my own comments.
Yeah, so I think I think Counselor's right, is that basically, I I I think we could give direction, but as far as an action item to approve, because we don't have an amount on the agenda, I would think that's probably correct.
Well, it's with, well within my budget and the and the fifty thousand that I'm authorized to sign up to. Um, so this is something that could have been without, if we were trying to be under the shade of darkness, it's something that I could have signed off on without even putting it on the agenda. Um I did this because I think that it's the most transparent, best way to move forward. Um.
So we could give direction and it'd be something you pull out of your own budget?
Correct.
Okay, well, um, all right, so is there any more questions? Questions in the public, comments?
Excellent, yeah, I, um, the only issue is doing the best to find, make sure that everybody in the county knows when these people are going to be here, so everybody can have, you know, everybody can have that just what, we can do the very best to make sure everyone in the county knows that these people are going to be here.
Yes, if this commission did choose to move forward with it, you, we could do it, we could make it like a town hall for these four hours and uh and then try to um kinda leverage the forces with the newsletter and a mailer and and actually maybe put even into the email where they could email back to us questions they would like asked during that four hours, so we could so we could kinda front end load this with every question that can possibly come.
Okay, so is there any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion, or actually, it'd just be direction, right, Bill?
You can make it this direction, man.
Okay, well, I would like to see our county manager proceed with this and get us into phase one to where then we can notify uh Lander County citizens, this is what we're discussing, these are the ideas and to move forward with this, so that's, how do you guys feel about that?
That's fine, just as long as we make sure, we do the very best to make sure everyone in the county knows, I'm good.
I think the county manager oughta go ahead with it and get it started, but before any final decisions made, I think the public needs to be.
Oh, absolutely, there will be.
Oh, absolutely.
Solely a discovery phase right now, I think that there's a lot to be answered yet.
Okay, so, um, all right, you got your question, thank you guys. Okay, we'll move to item twenty three, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the renewal of the interlocal contract between Lander County and the state of Nevada, acting by and through this Department of Health and Human Services Division of Healthcare, Financing and Policy and Division of Welfare and Supportive Services for medical assistance provided in Nevada, under authority of title. Uh, that is, who put these Roman symbols in here? Nineteen. Is it nineteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, so nineteen of the Social Security Act to individuals who meet financial and medical eligibility criteria. Total contract amount not to exceed one million um four thousand six hundred eighty eight dollars and seventy nine cents for the contract term of July one, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. So this is a, this is a pass through on the money, so um, are there any questions on this? No, any public comment or questions on it? Okay, Lakin, did you have something you wanted to say? Okay.
Um, real quick on this thing. I'm a little concerned way into the agreement, county agrees, which is D and then number three. It disputes regarding concerning county residents get referred to NACO, but it doesn't say what NACO's process is, but their their stuff is final.
We're on the, we're on the contract, Bill, I didn't hear what that was.
Okay, this is on the contract part of it. There's a subsection B that is, let's see, it's in your backup.
County agrees.
Attachment A, scope of work. Um, well, that's a separate, that's the attachment, it's back after the original contract. That is, you know, it's, you've got the inspection and audit and stuff, if you go through, I think it's about four or five pages in is attachment A. And then what I'm talking about is page two of three.
Right.
County agrees and says to refer disputes concerning county of residence to NACO.
Okay, I see that.
Okay, I I'm just pointing out to you, I don't know what their process is.
Yeah, why would, why would you refer to NACO, that makes no sense to me.
Well, I, forgive me, but I was thinking of you and your concern about NACO.
Well, I'm just saying, why, but why would you refer to NACO or, I mean.
Uh, because sometimes I'm, well, let's just take it, you might remember the old Inogen Hospital stuff that we used to do occasionally. Um, if somebody should rightly, like, let's say they got treated in Elko, um, but they're one of our county residents, but then Elko says, no, or we say, no, they're not, maybe they live on the border, whatever. Um, for those kinds of disputes, uh, somebody's gotta decide it, you know, as.
But so then it's a lobbying firm, because that's what they say they are, they're just lobbyists, right?
Well, that's what.
disputed that they have more power.
That's what I don't understand, it it, that doesn't seem like it's part of what NACO normally does.
I think Lakin has an answer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know that I have the the full answer and we might have to reach out to someone, but I believe that they just are the mediator between the counties, since all counties are part of NACO, they decide where the resident resides based on whatever information they're given. They sit as the mediator and say, okay, this county is responsible for that resident.
Anyway, I can live with it, I'm just wanna make sure you're aware of it, 'cause I know you're not happy with them sometimes.
All right, so are there any question, other questions or is there public questions or comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Bill, make a motion that we approve the renewal of the interlocal contract between Lander County and the state of Nevada, acting by and through its Department of Health and Human Services Division of Healthcare Financing and Policy and Division of Welfare and Supportive Services for Medical Assistance Provided in in Nevada, under authority of title nineteen of the Social Security Act to individuals who meet the financial and medical eligibility criteria. Total contract amount not to exceed one million four thousand six hundred and eighty eight dollars and seventy nine cents for the contract term of July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, Ellen, they're gonna say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move into next item twenty four, for discussion on grant reimbursement and clarification related to Austin Chamber grant payment request. You guys, you all, you got these packs, these were, yeah.
That was a lot of truth.
Yeah, it was, I was like, huh?
I just wanted to make sure I had everything, no, 'cause it was not letting me send all of it and so I was freaking out, but you guys got it all. So, I'm Miranda Tremaine for the record, um I'm with the Austin Chamber of Commerce, I'm the executive director. Um, so I'm here today to get a little bit more clarification on the reimbursement process uh for the grant. So when we budgeted for this year, we did have our our raffles written into the budget and since I've been with the with the chamber for, since twenty twenty one till current, we have been reimbursed for all those raffles. And so I'm just concerned on why now we aren't being reimbursed for that.
So if I understand right, this is basically, so is money being spent prizes, is that what it is?
Yeah, to ju- to, so we can get revenue off of that, you know, you want us to be self-sustaining, which it's really easy to do if you do have those prizes. Um, we did put on the Gridly Days rodeo this year, um, that was a huge one, because we, you know, you have to get money off of it, we spent, you know, there was a lot of money put into it and not as much money get, you know, back. So we were able to pull, you know, twenty five hundred dollars off of admissions. Um, I mean, we we, it was like pulling teeth to get those admissions anyways, you know, it's it's a community event and they really want that, so if we can't get that there, you know, our raffles, we were able to generate more than half of the revenue from the rodeo, just from the raffles. And so I guess I'm just a little bit confused on why. And so I guess I'm just a little bit confused on why in the past we had been reimbursed and then now, you know, after we had budgeted, already spent the money that we cannot be reimbursed for that.
That's a good question, so, but we have our, we have our policies as far as grants, right? And one of those is that we don't spend, the grant can't be used for prizes, basically. I don't know the exact verbiage, because I remember what I do recall specifically is the, was the racetrack. They wanted to be able to like use it to like pay, you know, like you won this, you get this, right? We're like, absolutely not. So, but my question is would be that, Lakin, is why did some things get paid even if it was a violation of our policy on grants?
So the prizes, the grant guidelines, the prizes were included in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget year. And I went back and looked at the twenty-one, twenty-two reimbursement requests from Austin Chamber and no prizes were ever asked for. It was all operational. The very first time prizes were asked for was June of twenty-three. And that's when they were redacted from the reimbursement, we did not pay them for them. And then they were asked again July, August and September of this year and I let Miranda know they weren't going to be reimbursed.
Okay, so.
So, so the verbiage on the grant guidelines is a little bit confusing and I, that's where I, I'm incorrect on it because I misunderstood that. I will come out and say that and I'm sorry, Lakin, for misunderstanding, but there, it, it is not, it does not specify exactly what you guys are looking for and it does, it's not broke up. It's, it's, it, there's typing errors on it. So I, I just ask that, you know, it is, it is hard when you've already spent that money because that money would have never been spent that way if it wasn't going to get, get reimbursed to us. You know, that puts us in a hole, we already tried super, super hard in Southern Landur County, you know, after COVID, our businesses plummeted, I mean, we don't have any, it didn't help that we had the center of town ripped up as well, you know? So now that, you know, we have to go to our businesses, we have maybe four solid businesses to ask for, to pay for these raffle prizes and, you know, in this day and age, everything's inflated, everything's expensive, it's hard, you know? And I think that it is super important that we keep the chamber afloat there in Southern Landur County because that is the hub for, you know, a lot of different things there.
Can I say that I, and tell me if I'm wrong, that possibly one of the reasons why there wasn't a reimbursement is because she wasn't doing Gridley Days that, I think, last year, or is that wrong?
No, so I do believe that this grant application package came back in front of you guys and you guys added additional items not to be paid. On the cover sheet of the grant application, it specifically says not to be used for prizes.
It says grants must not be used to pay for prizes of any kind, cash or otherwise.
But there's no comma, there's no break, so, I mean, there's, it's not typed out and it's not specified. And if we were reimbursed for it in the past, I guess I'm just super confused because in those packets, it does show in the reimbursement that we did get reimbursed for raffles in twenty-one, twenty-two. We also were reimbursed for raffles in twenty-two, twenty-three and now we are currently waiting for reimbursement for twenty-three, twenty-four, for the beginning.
So to read that again to me, what is that?
It says grants must not be used to pay for prizes of any kind, cash or otherwise.
I can show you.
I don't, I don't, I don't know how that can be misunderstood either way. Number two is, what is she referring to? Because you said, she's saying that they were reimbursed, you're saying they weren't.
Yeah, I went back and looked through the twenty-one, twenty-two requests and I didn't see any prizes that were requested. It was all operational stuff, which that's what we try to convey to the businesses or entities that come and get a grant from the county. You can ask for us to help you pay to put on the event, which we have reimbursed for supplies and the other things. The prizes should be bought out of the money to go to the event or enter the event.
Okay, well, I think despite even if it did happen back then, our policy is, is very clear that we don't pay for it.
Well, I will, I'll show you, just one second. Let me find this document because I will show you where the confusion lies.
Yes, so I, you know, this is the hard part of, this is where we, we oftentimes and myself and my staff can, can get crossways with, with people trying to do good things is, for the first time in, in how many years we finally had an audit free of any findings? And the reason is, is because we draw hard lines when we find something that's wrong. And this is one of them instances where, you know, obviously it's easy to just nod your head and pay the bill and move forward, but then you don't have audit-free findings. And that reflects on the commission, myself and the, and this, and our staff that, that's working on this to keep this this way. And that's why when Miranda asked for this to come before the commission, we said, yeah, we're welcome. We aren't going to pay it without your guys' approval because if it comes back to the finding, it can be on you guys, but it's not going to be on us. And that's, that's why we're here. So it may be missed at one point, doesn't make it right. So when we catch things, we bring it back and we try to hold it to a hard line.
And I know that one of the biggest issues is with, with, was with the racetrack. I know that because it, they, and so you can't differentiate the seventy-five thousand dollars being used for prizes or seventy-five dollars. And I think that's where we came to, you could not, we could no longer use our money for raffles and prizes because that was such a gross use of that. But that was not under you, that was under a different county manager and a different board. But still, that is just, that's where the, we came down and said, absolutely not, we cannot, because it's too hard to control those kinds of things.
And we were getting into problems where people were asking for cash prizes.
Yes.
And that's what my understanding was, that it was cash prizes that you couldn't give. I didn't understand the raffle part of it. And like the way that it's written on here, it's, you know, it does, to my knowledge, I thought it got left out of like in kind cash, you know, not cash, kind cash or otherwise. And there's no breakup of the sentence, so like I said, I misunderstood it, but at the same time, you know, if we were reimbursed for it in the past, I wouldn't have known any other difference.
Well, I, all I can say, Miranda, is I'm sorry for your misunderstanding on it, but we do have a policy and it's like two.
So even if you reimbursed it in the past?
Because it, well, yeah, and that, what Keya just said, unfortunately, it was, it wasn't seen.
Guys, can we just have one person of time talk, please?
That's what I was saying, we did not put that guideline in place until twenty-two, twenty-three.
Correct. Correct, but we were reimbursed in twenty-two and twenty-three for raffle, for raffle prizes.
Can you show me where you?
Yeah, I just don't have all of the, here.
Kathy, you were saying?
I don't know.
Sorry, Kathy.
No worries, no, it's all right.
It does also say in our grant application, they have to provide an affirmative statement to agree to abide by all administration policies and procedures.
Well, I know what this board's, this board's intent has been and I can, I mean, we've been very clear up here discussing it is that it can't pay for any sort of prizes.
It was discussed in budget workshop as well, it was already clear.
Yes, it was.
Okay, well, if you guys don't, I mean, I, I'm not going to sit here and argue with you guys. I will accept you, you know, and you guys do give a lot back to the chamber already and we will make it work, but I hope that maybe in the future we can come up with a plan of some sort that does give back. And if you guys are willing to split it in half, you know, for if we come and ask you separately from the grant to help with prizes or something, but, I mean, like I said, we, our businesses are, we don't have the economic development that we should down there to flourish. And if the chamber goes away, so does our events and so does the economic development. That's our tax dollars that are gone for our rooms, you know, that is, that, that alleviates people wanting to even travel to our place and we should want that, especially with this beautiful and historical. It, Southern Landur, all of it is, you know, it's, it's beautiful. So I really hope that, you know, next year we look at it and try to come up with something for that.
I appreciate that, Miranda.
Thank you, and thank you again for everything you guys do, I know that this can be hard, so. Do you guys want these over here?
We, I.
Maybe left right here. Thank you, thank you for listening.
All right, so we'll move on to item twenty-five for discussion of possible actions to approve, disapprove renewal of the YESCO outdoor media ground lease agreement in the amount of one thousand per year, per contract with the terms of January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty thirty-three. We currently have six and they are as follows. A, location thirty-four oh three five, south half of section twenty-six township thirty-two north, range forty-five east, I eighty, point five seven miles east of mile marker ten. All these abbreviations, you gotta forgive me, SS, ten miles.
Oh, don't, no, I'm there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so. B, location thirty-four oh four two, south half of section twenty-six township thirty-two north, range forty-five east, I eighty, point five seven miles, I'm thinking E O's east of mile marker ten, SS. C, location three four zero zero nine dash section twenty-six township thirty-two, range forty-five, APN oh eight, three nine oh oh seven. And D, location three four zero zero eight dash, or section twenty-six township thirty-two, range forty-five, APN oh eight, three nine oh oh seven. Location three four zero zero seven, section twenty-six township thirty-two, range forty-five, APN oh eight, three nine oh oh seven. And F, location three four zero zero six, section twenty-six township thirty-two, range forty-five, APN oh eight, three nine oh oh seven. So where, like C, D, E and F, where's that, where is that exactly? Anybody tell me? Because it sounds to me like we have several billboards all within a, where are they at?
They're along I eighty, I believe, right here, path like by the airport. Seth is on the phone, he could probably speak to it a little bit more, but.
I was just curious, so.
I did want to clarify, the amount was actually increased. Our current contracts or lease agreement are a thousand a year, but they're going up to fifteen hundred a year. YESCO put in an increase to pay the county more than what they're currently paying.
So are these billboards for like tourism convention?
Uh, they lease, YESCO leases the boards out to other entities to put what they want to put on there. And they're leasing the land from us.
We only have the land, they have the, the infrastructure on it. And they leased that, I, I think if, if I recall correctly, they gave them before this commission wanting to buy the land a while back and we declined.
So this is YESCO paying us fifteen hundred.
Correct.
Okay, that's where I was, I thought we were paying for all these signs, I'm like, what are all these?
No, so they are currently upping their, their.
Misunderstanding, so yes.
Their rental for the property.
That's right.
But we didn't catch it, sorry, so it says a thousand per year, but it's actually fifteen hundred.
Okay, so if we have a incorrect agenda, can we do business on it? Because they haven't, they haven't on this agenda a thousand, which should be fifteen hundred.
What's their backup say?
It says a hundred and twenty-five a month, which is fifteen hundred a year.
Ordinarily, you should be able to, you know, the, the question is, the issue is whether or not it's significant. And I don't think it's significant in the overall, especially since it's extra money to the county. It's not like we're expending money, you know, it's not creating a problem.
Is it something that we could?
But having said that, let me quick go over things. This is renewal of a longstanding contract. You might notice in the backup, you've got Mickey Yarborough, who hasn't been here for about fifteen years now, having been one of the signators on this. So, but it does have, like, there's a five-year no compete in there. That's what my phrase for it. In other words, if you have, if you want to put up somebody else's billboards other than YESCO's billboards, you, you can't do it for five years. You have automatic renewal, which I actually like, somebody thought ahead, year to year. And you have sixty days notice though if you're not going to do the automatic renewal. So in answer to your specific question, I don't think there's any harm in, in that. Just like when you have typographicals, we go forward with it. The fact that it's an extra five hundred dollars, you know, to the county for each billboard, who's going to complain?
I want it done correctly for the fact, if you don't do a complaint right, then if this is wrong, they question you on anything else that we're doing. So regardless of we're receiving the money or we're paying it out, I would rather have the agenda item done, even though it's nobody's fault.
That's fine if that's what you want.
Because, yeah, even though we're receiving the money, I respect that. If that's, all you do is open the mind, well, if they did this wrong, what else have they done wrong? And I would think it'd be safer just to come back with a corrected agenda.
So could we do this, could we approve it contingent upon it being re-agendized and then just ratify it at that point or not? Would it be best just to re-agendize?
Just re-agendize.
We can put that in.
Let's just do that, just to be safe, so.
Sorry about that.
No, it's, it's all right.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into item twenty-six, review consideration of possible action to approve and start accepting applications for the business improvement program to include approval or modifications of any or all of the associated program documents.
Hello, commissioners, so this has been a long time coming. This program started out with LEDA, LEDA got dissolved and so kind of me, Cole, Bert, Erin, we have a whole team of us, have been working on this. There's been a few changes from when it was at LEDA. Basically, it's a fifty-fifty match grant program. They apply, maximum amount is twenty-five thousand dollars. They have nine months to complete the program. At this point, this program was approved for thirty-five thousand dollars through the grant program. Kind of our team's thought was moving forward, we could create a special budget for this program, but that can be discussed at a later date, I guess. So I hope everyone has had a chance to read through.
Yeah, so let me just, to make it very simple and clear, so I'm a business owner and I want to apply for this and I, it's going to cost me twenty thousand dollars to pave my parking lot. Makes it nicer curbside appeal. What you're saying is the county will reimburse me ten thousand dollars to pay the ten thousand dollars, where they're paying half of what that project would cost me as a business owner?
Yes.
Which in our, in N R D A, in that meeting yesterday, they, there was a lady that came on, and I'm sorry, I cannot remember her name, that basically had, they have the same program.
In Elko.
In Elko.
Kathy Loughlin?
Yes, that's, and she, it was basically almost verbatim what we have here, Elko has. And they had just done, I think it was when West Windover just had a big project done with this and how well it was working. And so it works very well. But LEDA, like I said, LEDA originally had, was running with his ball and then the county decided, I mean, it was a good idea, so we decided just to keep going. And so, yes, there was a lot of brainstorming and a lot of meetings and I was part of that. And by, so this, I thought it was a very good idea and I was listening to the lady, she basically the same, same idea, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, no, I think it's a great, it's again, it's just another way that we're giving back to, you know, businesses in local Atlanta counties, so, Miranda?
So I would like to say that this is a great project for our economic development and in Southern Landur County, we have several businesses interested in already starting this project with some big improvements that are much needed. And so I think that it, you know, even sitting on the planning commission, I think it's so important that we do get ready for that budget and have some kind of, you know, a little bit bigger set in stone because I think once people hear the option to take care of it and flourish without it hurting them, I think a lot of people are going to take advantage of that.
Thank you, because it is a very good idea.
It is, yeah, and Elko's flourished from it. Their, their downtown, their town, everything, their city is beautiful. And, you know, they, there's a lot of hard work that goes into it and creativity, you know, instead of doing the main street project or anything like that, it's very set in stone and where you have to go with it and you have to, you know, have a certain look. But this one where we choose, you know, you have, you kind of have the option and the business has the option to do so, so.
So thank you, yeah, I think it's, you know, a, a great idea and so.
Yeah, so thank you guys for looking on that, I appreciate it.
So, so basically it's a maximum award of twenty-five thousand, so that'd be that business owner's going to invest fifty thousand dollars, you know, it'd be twenty-five thousand, right? So maybe awarded is twenty-five thousand per lot, so.
Oh, no, no, you're right, so fifty thousand and we reimburse twenty-five thousand, yes.
Okay, and then once that business owner has applied for that and gotten that, he's not going to be able to come back and do it again or what do you mean?
Not in that same fiscal year, so new fiscal year, they can apply for a new project.
Okay, all right, great. Anybody else have any questions? Public questions, comments?
I'd like to thank Aaron for bringing this thing to Flander County. He, I think he hijacked this from Elko and brought it over here and.
Yeah, that happens, yeah.
We're happy about it.
Yeah, and it's just a test project. There's a couple of channels in place, the building department will be seeing through some of these inspections during construction and post-construction. So we got some checks in place to make sure that Lander County's funds are being utilized properly. And again, it's a test project, we hope that it expands, it's an amazing opportunity for your business. for your businesses to kind of reap some benefit in this area that's not being done anywhere else. Typically, you do an improvement district, that improvement district is a tax-based district, you then take those taxes from those local landowners and apply it to a program like this. So this is much different where that tax is not being burdened on the taxpayer.
Thank you.
And this, Ms. Kathy, will be advertised in the newsletter to all the business owners, we'll try to get the word out.
Yeah. Very nice, it was very nice, and like I said, this woman spent twenty minutes on this program, and just the, the West Windover one, they just said was, they were just over the moon to how beautiful it had turned out. So I think that this, it's a win-win, and this is giving back, you know, giving back to our community. So I think nice work, and nice work to everybody else on it, you know, so.
Thanks, Sheldon. So do we have a motion to approve and start accepting?
I'll make that one, so.
Okay. So we have a motion, and do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, everyone say aye.
Aye.
All right, there you go.
Thank you.
Yay.
Okay, so we'll move into twenty-seven, correspondence, reports, future agenda. Can we go back to number nineteen? Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm so sorry, yeah.
Don't forget Pam.
Yeah, sorry, Pam. So nineteen, a date from Natural Resource Officer Pam Harrington regarding any past, current, and future projects.
Thanks, Pam Harrington, for the record. Got some cards, Lander County. For you guys now, can you get an opening? Thanks for accommodating my meeting at eleven. Boy, you've had a long day today, and I gotta say, I'm just so impressed by you. Thank you for doing what you do for all of us. And I'll make it quick, probably ready to go, but I thought I'd start with a fun fact anyway. You probably know we have five thousand seven hundred people in the county for twenty-twenty census, and we have half as many mule deer, just about, yeah, twenty-five hundred deer, so, good.
That's it?
I know, I've been talking to Jeremy, and he's going to try and up that to one per person, he's working on it.
Yeah.
So, and also, you probably know, we have five thousand five hundred square miles in the county, so we have like one square mile per person. I think that's pretty awesome, too, for what it's worth. So I just, I broke things down into a few, well, three different categories, mining, energy projects, and then other natural resource stuff I'm looking at. So anytime you want me to come and give you a presentation or others on topics, that would be awesome. But what's going on right now? Well, I just joined the NACO Public Lands Subcommittee. My first meeting will be tonight, so, and I'm, I'm meeting with the Lander Public Lands Commission. And, yeah, J R and I were there, along with Bert, a couple Mondays ago. So that's underway. Mining is the first, first category here, and something happened two days ago that's kind of big, big news. If you hadn't heard, the Gold Rush Project Record of Decision was signed, so that's going forward, and that's five hundred and seventy jobs, is what they're figuring on. It's about twenty thousand acres are under that project, mostly euriques, we've talked about, but I just thought I'd mention that, if you didn't see that, that rod was signed. The Robertson Project is the one that I had to go take the cooperating agency call on, that's still going through the cooperating agency process. It'll be for the public to take a look at the E I S in early twenty-twenty-four, but I'll mention something that we all did, Lander County, is we requested that mitigation measures be subject to the NEPA process, because some of those mitigation measures will be longer than the mine's life. And guess what? They heard us, it's going to be in there. And into other future projects, yeah, it's really quite huge. The next project that I talk about is where I actually heard about it, the Marigold Buffalo Valley Mine Expansion. I went to that cooperating agency meeting, and they announced it to the mine at that process, that mitigation measures have to be addressed in NEPA. So thank you, commissioners, you guys were heard. I think your letter asked that we will request an interpretation on this from the C E Q, which is a Council on Environmental Quality, who is the White House's council, if B L M was going to go forward without having mitigation measures in NEPA, and that, they heard us, so, that's a big deal, thank you. Yeah, so I mentioned the Marigold Expansion, that's six thousand to nine thousand acres, but it's under cooperating agency, so it's not really privy to the public too much yet, because things might change.
Well, and I have a question on that one.
Okay.
Because I was just at a meeting that they put on, because they just started doing monthly meetings or quarterly meetings like Nevada Gold Mines, and out there, I specifically asked a question about the sage hen, where I, I had, all I had was blank eyes, and I just said, you know, what are your mitigation with the sage hen and the lux, because the environmental gentleman tried to say, well, you know, we're going to try to create new, new, and I said, you can't, that does not work. And so I just wanted to make sure that they, you know, heard me and that I, because they were both, both of them are new, the C E O there is new, he's from Canada, originally from South Africa, and so he really doesn't know anything about sage hen or the issue. And so I just said, just so you know, this is a huge issue, and I kind of got looked at with glass-tolder eyes, and so just on that, for that expansion, for that de-watering, I would like to see what their mitigation is for those save that sage hen.
Thank you for noting that, and it sounds like they heard you, because B L M mentioned, we have to have mitigation measures in this NEPA process for the E I S, so, but I'll take note of that, too, and talk to Endow about what it's looking like. I appreciate that. Okay, that's about all I had for the mining projects for now, I'm sure there'll be more and more. But moving on then to just energy projects, because we've got a lot of those going on as well. I had first the Green Link North Transmission Line, that one's still going through cooperating agency, and they're trying to figure out what will be the best route, so just, we're on it, we're, we're at the table for that one as well, but it's still early. There's a geothermal expansion in Whirlwind Valley, just south of Biowaway, that one, they just won out, went out for a public comment, and it's due by December twenty-second on their draft environmental assessment. So we have provided some comment so far towards us. I'm still wondering if they can provide water for the drilling instead of using groundwater at the site because of some domestic wells that are close by, so probably reiterate that. Okay, and then, what was the next one? Oh, yeah, there's a Crescent Valley Geothermal Project, sure you've heard about that one, and, and that's just scoping was started in July, so it's still early on. But that one, interestingly enough, is the Elko B L M office is in charge of that one. So I interjected us, I contacted the Elko office, but I haven't heard back, but that's just how that one's going. And then, just talking about natural resource projects, speaking of sage grouse, they're going forward looking for more public comment by December twenty-ninth on this D E I S, but we haven't engaged in the past, and this is a huge body of work, so probably we could engage during the next step, which there'll be a ninety-day comment period in early twenty-twenty-four, and that's, I gotta get up to speed on it. So there's that. Oh, and then the public, the Lander County Public Lands Act, I would like to know more about that, I need to do some more, some more research on how I can help you with that, and hopefully work with Sean Baker a little bit, too, about recreation and what the plans are there. And I just learned about our Gilbert Creek Project from Jeremy, I'm so excited, it looks like it's a fantastic opportunity, and he is as well, we had a good meeting on that. So in the future, hopefully I'll have more to report there and get your feedback and direction on the Gilbert Creek Project. And I think I might have covered it, then, oh, yeah, feral horses, so, yeah, I know, I'll make that one quick, but if you ever want a presentation, I met the two ladies at B L M that are working on the horses, they're great, you probably know them, but sometime, we can talk more about it, but Bert and I did put together comments from Lander County that we submitted to the National Horse and Burrow Commission, I think that's what they're, Advisory Commission, they just met in Phoenix, and then I provided verbal comments over Zoom as well, but for whatever that is worth. But, yeah, that's, oh, and Sam Alt, if you guys know Sam, he's now in charge of that program, he got a promotion, we learned about that at the, at the Public Lands meeting, so I just thought I'd mention that. And I think that's it, but any direction you give me, anything you want more information on?
Well, thank you for the update.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, Pam.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll move to item twenty-seven, correspondence, reports, future agenda items. Forgot one. Okay?
One more in the drop box here. Our wages are not keeping up with the cost of living, maybe at least being back the, bring back the incentive raises or some kind of higher cost of living increases. So that's, now I have a hundred percent of them.
Okay, so do we have any agenda items?
An update maybe with the energy company in January, something?
On, on what's I?
The, the energy company, about.
Yes, so, so just a quick update on that, is they haven't completely answered all of our questions that, that we were concerned with as far as the safety in some aspects, they just need to check some boxes before we go to the next step. So when we get good, clear answers on all them, then we will, we'll proceed to the next step and bring it back in front of you guys, we're just waiting on clear, clear responses.
All right, thank you.
Okay, there's one more. Okay, we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only.
I know you guys are hungry, I apologize.
That's all right, yeah.
I'm going to be fast, I promise. Okay, I'm going to sandwich it, because it is, it is, I don't know who wrote that letter, but it, it segues directly to what I want to talk about, but I'd always like to sandwich things, so I'm going to start with positive, shift into some concerns, and then we'll go back. No, that's, that doesn't work. My name's Amy Nelson, for the record, I'm going to start with a positive. I do want to say, because maybe a lot of the community and maybe even the commissioners may not be aware, but Bert Ramos has attended several evening meetings, he's very present in this community, I know people have told me that on weekends, sometimes evenings, as you know, during all that flooding, I just want people to appreciate that this is a very visible leader, and, you know, coming to night meetings that are lasting a long time, where he's probably going, pick it up, but I do appreciate that, and I would be recognized for that, thank you. And then I'll sandwich in my concern, and then we'll move back to a positive. So Lander County Commissioners, while this may not be our fault, what's happening, it's not our fault, it is a reality, and it may be our responsibility to at least be aware of what's happening, start discussing what's happening, and maybe look for some solutions. So I'm just going to read my comments. Lander County Commissioners, I'm not sure if any of you saw the recent Facebook post regarding the significant increases in our energy bills. Some Lander County citizens on fixed incomes had their gas bills almost double. This inflationary trend, as Miranda talked about, and as the letter that Bert just wrote, read, talked about, in addition to the increased cost of food, gas, houses, rent, property taxes, vehicles, and other necessities is alarming. The ongoing erosion of the value of the U.S. dollar due to flagrant and irresponsible printing of money, no backing by physical assets or metals, and various other economic factors has contributed to a significant decline in the purchasing power of the dollar. In fact, last I saw, the purchasing power of the dollar is now at approximately two to three cents, from when it was, the Federal Reserve came into play in nineteen thirteen. With that said, wages are not increasing at a rate to keep up with inflation. According to a recent CBS News article, the average American household must spend an additional eleven thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars annually just to maintain the same standard of living they enjoyed in January of twenty-twenty-one, right before inflation soared to forty-year highs, according to the recent analysis of government data. Our traditional store of value has always, that stood the test of time is precious metals, particularly gold and silver. Historically, these metals have been sought as after as a reliable asset during times of economic uncertainty and currency deflation, devaluation. Unlike fiat currencies, which are susceptible to inflation and government policies, gold and silver had demonstrated resilience as hedges against economic instability. I was telling, I know a lot of you guys have already heard the tale, I always tell of the man in nineteen, in the nineteen thirties, he wanted to purchase a full suit, and back in those days, they dressed to the nines. So in those days, the cost of a suit with the tie, the belt, the cuffs, the hold, the shoes, the, the belt was approximately thirty-five dollars or an ounce of gold. So I ask you today, what can thirty-five dollars buy toward that suit? And like I say in here, possibly the belt, maybe a low-grade belt, maybe the socks, not even the shoes. What can an ounce of gold buy today?
The same suit?
The full suit, with the cuffs, maybe even gold-plated, no, I wouldn't go that far. So as you can see, the ounce of gold has retained its value over time and would still purchase a suit in full. Gold is a good form of wealth protection because it has retained its value throughout history. Gold keeps pace with inflation, and gold retains its value. I put two charts, or three charts in here, one from the purchasing power of the dollar since the Federal Reserve, and then, of course, the impact of nineteen thirty-three, and then nineteen seventy-one, when Nixon took this off the gold standard. Finally, the typical American household, oh, I already read that to you. It is time for our community to start having discussions, conversations about how to educate and protect our assets, as well as how to address the economic crisis many of our citizens, young, elderly, and those in the middle, are facing right now. And I just want to reiterate what that person wrote in that note, the costs, the, the wages are not keeping up with inflation, and people are very stressed out, as most of you have heard, and some of us in this room are probably experiencing, and I think there needs to be strong discussion in this community, and of course, you guys are the leaders of this community. So thank you for your time and attention to this matter, and I'm going to end sandwiching a positive. I just want to continue to praise you guys, Lander County continues to approve, to beautify. I feel like trust is stronger than it's been in a long time. I'm grateful for the leadership of all of you guys, and, and I'm also grateful for the commissioners' leadership, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
More public comment?
Aaron Martinez, for the record, just wanted to tell you folks that we received some correspondence from the state of Nevada in regards to the Austin Realignment Project. They've essentially approved our tentative map submittal, and they've issued us a, a letter stating that, and it should be coming effective to the planning department. So in January, you're going to see us coming to you for final map approval, and so we're hoping that by the twenty-ninth, we'll be doing that, and it looks like the attorneys might be seeking signatures at January thirtieth, February fifth-ish, so just wanted to give you an update on, on that project.
Yes.
Muted.
Do we have somebody that has public comment that's on the phone? Hello, anybody have public comment?
Muted. Unmuted.
Okay, so is there any more public comment? Okay, we'll hear your motion.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, before you do that, do you want to go back to not having a qualm on your?
No, I already, I already talked to, I already talked to him about it.
All right, so I'll second that, so.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody.